We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. If everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you very much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Argument Matthew.
Here.
Argument Sage.
Here.
Argument Malumwey.
Here.
Argument Burgess.
Here.
Argument Painter.
Here.
Argument Schmidt.
Here.
Argument Black.
Here.
Argument Harmon.
Here.
Argument Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and start with our recognitions and appointments. The first is a proclamation declaring Central Catholic High School 2017 as a national blue ribbon school. And I wonder if I could have our very own state representative, Dan Brady, come forward, as well as Jim Fruen, former city councilman. Jim? And I have a city's proclamation. I believe Dan has something too from the state of Illinois.
Mayor, Principal School is here, Sean Foster.
Sean, absolutely. Sean?
I don't know if you agree.
Of course we do. You stay where you are.
I'd like to tell everybody who you got.
Sean, good to recognize you and thank you so much. And this is, I'll start with a Bloomington proclamation and then we'll go to the state level. A proclamation, Central Catholic High School 2017 National Blue Ribbon School recognition. Whereas we are here to celebrate the achievements of Central Catholic High School's faculty and staff, both past and present, who believe in the mission of Central Catholic High School and who have come to work every day to make a difference in their students' lives. And whereas the Council for the American Private Education nominated Central Catholic to be recognized as a 2017 National Blue Ribbon School. And whereas Central Catholic High School is the first and only high school in Bloomington to receive recognition as a national blue ribbon school, receiving the award as an exemplary performing school. And whereas there are 33,000 private schools in the nation, only 50 private schools received the 2017 National Blue Ribbon Award. Whereas Central Catholic High School is a comprehensive coeducational four-year school with a college preparatory emphasis, with a Christ-centered environment. And whereas Central Catholic students acquire 21st century skills and graduate as college-ready young men and women. Therefore, today, November 27, 2017, we congratulate Central Catholic High School as a 2017 National Blue Ribbon School. Signed, Terry Renner, Mayor. Thank you so much. You come forward with the principal. Oops. I want to make sure that I put this in here properly. I want to mess that up. Thank you. Congratulations. Thanks. Dan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Hi, too. Mr. Foster, I want to offer my congratulations. First off, along with former Councilman Jim Fruen, what year did you graduate from Central Catholic High School, Mr. Fruen?
1969. And I am a honored graduate of 1979. I don't know why you hook younger than I do, but anyway. From the Illinois House of Representatives, Mr. Foster and your entire staff and student body at Central Catholic High School, the members of the Illinois House of Representatives are pleased to congratulate Central Catholic High School on its recognition by the United States Department of Education as a 2017 National Blue Ribbon School. And to what the mayor has already articulated, I will not be redundant, but I'll simply say, on behalf of the Illinois General Assembly, resolved by the House of Representatives of the 100th General Assembly of the state of Illinois, that we congratulate Central Catholic High School on its 2017 National Blue Ribbon School recognition. And we recognize the dedication of the faculty and staff and to its students. And be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this resolution be presented to Principal, Mr. Sean Foster of Central Catholic High School, as an expression of our esteem and respect. Congratulations to you and all the staff and student body at Central Catholic High School. You've made us all proud. Congratulations.
Thank you. Would any of you like to say a few words?
Just wanted to take a brief moment to thank this council and this community. One of the things that I shared with our students a week ago, we had a ceremony at school, is that it is the work and support of our predecessors that have allowed us to be a national blue ribbon school this year. And I would extend those words to this community. Without your support and without your help, it wouldn't be possible. Bloomington is known for great education and we're proud to partner with you guys in that endeavor. So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you so much. We have another recognition. We have the appointment of Thomas Krieger to the Planning Commission. Tom, are you here? Okay. Tom, good to see you. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve. And just as we may have had a few people leave, we might be able to accommodate a few more who've come in. I think we had a few people leave for recognitions. If you could let some of the people know that they, on the outside, we, I think we might have a couple of seats actually in the front row. We have four seats in the front row for people to come forward. Okay.
Could it be the usher?
I don't know who the usher will be, but we still have a few more seats. Okay. Okay. Now, before we go to public comment, I just want to, I know that many of you here for one particular cause, and I want to make it clear, we've certainly spoken amongst each other on the city council. We will have a special meeting of the Bloomington City Council in December to discuss a possible resolution as a welcoming city. And we certainly invite you to participate in that as well. And depending upon the outcome of those discussions of our, of the city council, we will, at a meeting shortly thereafter, vote on a resolution for Bloomington as a, as a welcoming city. Anyway, so at this point, what I, we have way more than the number of people who can speak within a half an hour, and that is the time. I will record this at 7:11. So, I would ask you as much as possible, when you come forward, to make points that have not been made already, or perhaps just reinforce them. And I will call these in groups of three, so that we can be as expeditious as possible to get as many people to speak and we can hear from as many of you as you can. Now, actually, I'm going to go ahead because I'm going to, I'm going to make this another minute. If you specifically want to talk to me and you want, I still have our mayor's open houses, actually, they are one-on-one meetings. They are every Friday before regular Monday, city council meeting. This past week, because of Thanksgiving, it was a Wednesday, but that's extremely unusual. It's almost always Friday from 4:30 to 5:30. And feel free to sign up or just come on by between 4:30 and 5:30. And sometimes I can get you answers or solve problems in real time. And we can certainly have a conversation at that point. When it comes to public comment, our practice is not to respond. Okay? So, at this point, I'm going to start with Patricia Martin, and then Glenn Ludwig, and Jeff Croweble. Crable? Is that an A? Crable, sorry. Okay. So, Patricia, Glenn, and Jeff, and you have, each have up to three minutes. And if you don't use your entire three minutes, that would, we can make sure that we can get it through as many people as possible. Patricia.
Okay. Winter is now here, and I'm most concerned about the location of bus stops near our local hospitals. Broomend, for example, has a long upward road leading from the bus stop at university to the main hospital entrance. And it is difficult to manage in the summer, impossible for people like me in the winter. The hospital has redone an area nearby intended for the disabled, for disabled with access to cars. Why can't we add another stop on Virginia where the original stop was located? The hospital orthopedic and fitness center near the airport likewise requires a long walk from the bus stop, once more across a large parking area to the entrance. This will be equally difficult to manage, especially when covered with ice and snow, and I wouldn't even try to do it. However, the center has told me that they would be willing to have a bus stop near their front door. OSF has somewhat shorter walks to the hospital from the north and south sides, but once more across busy streets and with no streetlights. There's a parking lot on the south side and another sloping driveway leading to the street on the north side to manage. In addition, the public library no longer has any bus stops nearby. None. Yet again, patrons must deal with ferocious traffic on East Street, turn right to cross more parking lots, and go down another slope into a darkened entrance. I think the recent suggestions that a new library location be found should be most beneficial. I have talked to Connect Transit and our city officials about this at meetings and receptions, and I appreciate Isaac Thorne's willingness to let us speak together, but these issues still exist. Transit and city authorities and institution managers should meet to discuss and work out plans that will be less unnerving for our bus and pedestrian populations. Please. Finally, the front street area and its shelters need to be cleaned more frequently. The cubicles are often used for purposes other than those for which they were intended, as are the bushes behind. The latter also serving as repositories for garbage. Again, the removal of these bushes has been discussed on several occasions by city and bus authorities and patrons. Mr. Rosmussen, however, did an excellent job of cleaning up the area two years ago for the Jazz Fest. And I also want to offer my very best wishes to Mr. Rosmussen and his new position. Lika til. Good luck, from one Scandinavian to another. And I know our city is in good hands when we have a Scandinavian, a Danish city manager and a police chief who speaks Swedish. I'm very happy about that. My background is Scandinavian. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Glenn Ludwig, and then Jeff and Colleen Stem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Glenn Ludwig, 23 S. Story away. I'll try to make this real quick. This evening's meeting, I believe, might become a training ground for the future. I say that because I know that you've got a very challenging budgeting process ahead of you. And I think that, that it's going to cause a need, create a need, for priority establishment and tough decisions. And that's what I wanted to talk about tonight. I've got some questions. I know you're not going to answer them, but by asking a question, maybe I'll get you to think about something you might have not thought before. The first one is a quick one. I wanted to ask a question about pension spiking. I'd thought that it was all taken care of. I'd been told that it was all taken care of. I'm happy to learn tonight that, first off, that your legal advice made you call it spiking because it is. I think that's appropriate. And the other thing I would, would like to say is that if there are some holes to be plugged, what are you waiting for? Moving on to small business development, you've got an action to take there. And I think it's an opportunity for you to, with regards to showing where you stand as a city and town neighborhood or metropolitan area. Because you've got a chance of, of kind of taking the let's kiss and hug and get along, or you've got a chance of, oh, well, let's stick 'em again and create a little more war. I just hope that, that you decide to meet in the middle somewhere. Another item which caught my eye is a brick street restoration. The commitment of time and money into going through this multiple, many-page studies that have been done on this particular project must have a six-figure or more cost. Brick streets kind of to me is a looking back versus looking towards the future situation. I think that, I don't, I don't support the idea, although I know I'm maybe in the minority. I think it creates kind of a privileged neighborhood, and I'm not sure that's, that's good. I really wonder, I understand that there's been a lot of effort put into this, but I wonder why we make it, are making decisions about this in a timeframe where the, you don't even have the money budgeted to do that. With that, I'll sit down and give somebody else a little bit of time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jeff, Colleen, and then Christina Deutsch.
Jeff Crable, thank you. So, this morning, was there an undocumented immigrant who failed to report a crime to the police or be a witness, report being a witness to a crime, or failed to attend a court hearing because they were fearful that they would be detained? They were fearful because they heard the ICE director say that undocumented immigrants should live in fear. There's been a threefold increase in what is called noncriminal detentions since Donald Trump has been elected. And that's why I support a welcoming city ordinance, and that's what I'm here to promote. And I think it's important to note, I know that the council's working on this from a, from a legal basis as well. But the ordinance would still, it would still allow the city to honor federal and state law with continued compliance with any lawfully mandated activities, but would not voluntarily cooperate with ICE or CBP in any way. I know maybe there's a risk that the Department of Justice would come after Bloomington, as it has with the city of Chicago, but I think the undocumented immigrants in this town deserve that this town take a risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jeff. Colleen, Christina Deutsch, and Tom Cullen.
My name is Colleen Stern. I'm a speech-language pathologist at Bent Elementary in District 87. I'm here in support of passing a welcoming cities ordinance. Bent Elementary is privileged to have our bilingual students served in our district through our bilingual program. I really enjoy serving my students, most of whom are citizens, but many of whom, whose parents are undocumented. Some of the students I work with have parents and siblings who have not been able to join them here in Bloomington. Our students who have been separated from family members experience emotional challenges throughout their days at school, and it can make it hard for them to focus on both schoolwork and forming relationships with their peers. As someone who sees these challenges firsthand, I want to urge us to go forward as a progressive and compassionate city and make sure all of our residents from all countries know we value them both as citizens of Bloomington and of this country. I am a member of the first social justice committee for District 87. And one of my colleagues and members of that committee, Kim Taber, was quoted in the panograph when District 87 earlier this year put forth a welcoming school resolution. She said, "It means a lot that the resolution was so strongly supported by the board. We want to see the students feel successful in a country where they don't often get that message. To hear it straight from the district is powerful." Many of my students, I don't think, realize what can happen to their parents or what could happen to them. They see themselves, and we talk about what they want to be when they grow up, they see themselves being police officers, firefighters, teachers, members of this community. And to have that taken away from them, I think would be very sad for both them and this community. So, I think to hear it straight from the Bloomington City Council would matter a lot as well. Thanks.
Thank you very much. We have Christina Deutsch, Tom Cullen, and Julian Westerhout.
Good evening. My name is Christina Deutsch, and I am an immigrant who came to the United States in 1964 from Bolivia in South America. When I moved to Bloomington, because I married a Bloomingtonian, the city was very welcoming, very appealing, and very made me part of it. I never felt discriminated or unwanted. And I was privileged to work in a community center where they have a program to welcome immigrants and help them adjust to the United States. And I was teaching the rules of the road, and I was teaching the ways of our life in the United States. And I also learned that when the Chinese were here building our railroads, they were also welcome in that community center. So, Bloomington has always been a welcoming community. However, because of the immigration laws are so far behind, people don't know that you cannot apply for a job employment authorization. And there's waiting lists by people that have petitioned their family members, long, long years and years, 20, 30 years. And so, we do have the workers that we need, working in our community, undocumented. And many are well-assimilated workers and paying taxes. However, they are sometimes stopped for driving without a license. And because ICE has to deport so many people, they come and get them. And they keep them for three weeks. A mother, and I know many of them, a mother of small children was taken away. We couldn't find her. An 18-year-old who never had any criminal charges was taken away, and the parents were devastated. We didn't know where she was. So, these are people that are not criminals. Definitely, we want police to definitely take the criminals out of our area. But if they ask, if they act like ICE, then people are afraid of our policemen. And they're not going to report, and they're not going to protect themselves. So, the Coalition for Keeping Families Together, we are asking the city to please pass the ordinance of being a welcoming committee. And could I ask everybody that supports this ordinance, stand up, please? Okay, this is, thank you. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. We go to Tom Cullen, Julian Westerhout, and Clarissa Castner.
Hi, thank you. I'm Tom Cullen. I live at Two Sunpoint Court in Bloomington. I'm the chairperson of the Steering Committee for the Central Illinois Chapter of the ACLU, and it's on that, in that role that I'm appearing to you this evening. Our Steering Committee urges you to pass a welcoming city ordinance as soon as possible. And I'd like to briefly explain our reasoning for this support. Our Steering Committee signed on to support the welcoming city ordinance presented by the Keep Families Together Coalition last spring. The dangers presented by the Trump administration's deportation rhetoric was evident to our committee before the inauguration. The ACLU has a long history of standing up for the rights of immigrants. In 1920, the ACLU stood up to then Attorney General Palmer's campaign of harassment and deportation against so-called politically radical immigrants. In 1942, the ACLU stood up again against our government's internment of Japanese Americans. More recently, the ACLU has taken stands against police profiling and immigration bans based on the primary religion of the country of origin. The ACLU's position on this issue is based in part upon the 14th Amendment. The 14th Amendment guarantees due process when suffering a deprivation of life, liberty, or property, and equal protection of laws to all persons, not only citizens. The equal protection clause has been interpreted by the Supreme Court to include protection from discrimination on the basis of suspect classifications, including race, national origin, and immigration status. So, nationally, the ACLU has recently launched its Freedom Cities Campaign with model policies and rules suggested for making communities more welcoming and immigrant-friendly. Within our state, the ACLU of Illinois has given its explicit support to our Steering Committee's participation in this coalition. We have members of this community who are scared to call the police. We have children who go to school in this community who are scared that their mother or father will not be there when they get home. This isn't who we are, or at least it's not who we used to be until very recently. And I don't remember being asked to vote that change to our national identity and our character as a nation of immigrants primarily and their descendants. We urge you to pass a welcoming city ordinance as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Julian Westerhout, Clarissa Castner, and Charlotte Alvarez.
Hello again. I'm Julian Westerhout of East Monroe Street. I'm here tonight primarily to talk to you about brick streets. Got up this morning and was feeling nostalgic. In January 2007, my wife and I purchased our house on East Monroe Street, and in that cold day of closing, I stood in the middle of Monroe Street and I clicked a photograph heading one direction up the street and a photograph heading down the street the other direction. I looked at those photographs this morning, and the difference between that street 10 years ago, 10 and a half years ago, and today is somewhat dramatic. And then I thought about it. You know, I thought, gosh, this street has really degraded more than it should have. And I thought about the process where I went before the Historic Preservation Commission and then the Planning Commission eight years ago, when we were trying to get a brick streets plan passed, which did not ultimately get adopted by the city. And I thought, you know, a lot of the damage to our street and to the brick streets throughout the community, the ones that are left, are because we have had no policy from the city on how these things should progress. So, as the street has degraded, as there have been repairs, as things have happened, the street has been patched, it has not been maintained properly, and we're in that situation. And our streets are in poor condition. I think that the plan that has been put forth and has been developed is an extremely good plan, that's very well thought out, that ranks streets on their need. And it is certainly not something that, unlike the plan from eight years ago, which was sort of based a lot on neighborhoods, this is really on needs. And indeed, where I live on East Monroe Street, it is not a fancy neighborhood. It's a, it's a very, it's one of the oldest streets in town. As I've told you before, it was originally North Street, platted in 1834. It's, it's got a lot of history there, but it's very much a working-class neighborhood with a lot of interesting houses and a lot of interesting people. But what you have before you is a really good plan, and certainly it comes with costs. I would also, if you've read your packet, you notice that a lot of those costs are for things beyond the brick streets. You know, this, if, if the brick streets, in, in our case, are done, it also involves things like replacing the water main, you know, which is something that certainly is going to have to be done sooner or later. It certainly makes sense if you're going to reconstruct a brick street to replace the water main. But that is a large portion of this, $180,000-plus dollars. Sidewalks, curb cuts, all of these sorts of things. It's a reconstruction. But again, I would remind you that our brick street dates to the 1920s and has basically seen virtually no maintenance in those 90 years. And this is something that is worth doing. It's worth doing and worth doing right, and I urge you to adopt it and to provide funding, at the very least for maintenance, and really keep those three and a half miles of streets in good shape as much as they can going forward. I'd also, in my last five seconds, like to say that as the child of immigrants, and I strongly support the welcoming cities ordinance.
Thank you. Clarissa, and Charlotte, and then Lori Burner.
Hi, my name's Clarissa Castner. This is my daughter Vera, and my husband Gabriel Jimenez is over there taking pictures. We are here today to speak as community members and members of IPA that we would like to also support the welcoming city ordinance. We speak out because we personally lived through the immigration system. It is a broken system. There's a lot of gray area. So, my husband's status was uncertain for almost two years. He, you know, even though I'm a citizen. And we also have dreamers in our community who little by little, their statuses are becoming kind of in that gray area. Now, we can kind of hide behind the term illegal, but people have mentioned that there've been things in our past in the United States that legal doesn't always mean it's a moral thing to do. So, it's definitely not the moral thing to do to separate families or to even have families living in fear. I know we say that our police don't work with immigration, but I know in this last year, I, people have been asked about their last names, so maybe they should, the police should call immigration because of the last names. They've been asked where they are born. And with those experiences being shared around, people are afraid to go to the police when something happens. I was encouraged not to press charges against an attempted assault because my husband was going through immigration. So, those are things that are really happening in Bloomington that I'd like to, just say that I'd like to change. It breaks my heart when people would call me and ask me, does my driver's license, is that still valid now? Am I safe to drive my children to school? It breaks my heart to see my friends jump when there's a knock at the door. And it breaks my heart just to know that they won't stand up and say they've been a victim of a crime here, just because of that fear. So, I thank you guys very much for the work that you do. And I know that maybe the ordinance has taken a while to come about. We've been talking about it for almost a year now, and there are families still living in fear. I know that, you know, meetings are a month away, a month away, but each of those months, there's people that do live in fear. there's people that do live in fear. There's Dreamers that are falling into that gray area. And so I would just really like to see Bloomington be a welcoming city where everyone can feel safe in their town. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Charlotte, and Lori Berger, and Valerie Parker.
Good evening. My name is Charlotte Alvarez. I'm the Executive Director and a Staff Attorney at The Immigration Project. Members of the City Council, I'm asking for your leadership and urging you to pass a welcoming city ordinance that states in clear, simple, concise terms that our city will not spend its resources on immigration enforcement that tears our communities apart. Being undocumented is actually not a crime. It is a federal civil violation, like federal copyright law or some forms of corporate tax evasion. Enforcement of civil immigration laws, which are harsh, complex, full of extreme consequences, are best left to federal functions, should not be performed or engaged in in any way by our, by our local law enforcement. In fact, any connection on any level between the City of Bloomington and ICE undermines trust with undocumented immigrant community. A welcoming city ordinance increases public safety by fostering that trust and cooperation between police and the immigrant community that they are here to serve. Every day, individuals in this community are deciding whether to avoid the police or cooperate with them. You may not see them, Bloomington Police Department may not see them, but we at The Immigration Project see them. We know individuals are much less likely to report crimes if there's any chance it will put them or their relatives in danger of deportation. If the Bloomington Police Department is able to decide to cooperate with ICE on a case-by-case basis, there will continue to be a reasonable fear in those immigrant communities that reporting crimes will result in deportations. We need to get rid of that fear. We need a clear, bright-line rule separating our police from immigration officials. Approximately one in 10 children in Illinois is a U.S. citizen living with at least one undocumented family member. If one of those children witnessed a crime or was the victim of a crime, do you really want them to feel they have to choose between doing the right thing, reporting that crime, or turning in their family or keeping them together? A welcoming city ordinance is needed, and it is legal. Under our system of federalism enshrined in the U.S. Constitution, federal government cannot force local officials to perform federal functions. Several other cities across the state, from Skokie to Carbondale, have passed similar ordinances. When the executive branch has challenged these policies in larger cities, not in smaller communities, they lose. Just two weeks ago, the federal court ruled in Philadelphia that these policies were legal. I'm not saying there's no risk at all to our city, but sometimes what is a little risky is also right, just, and legal. As City Council members, you decide if ICE will receive our, the help of our police in tearing families apart, or if our police will stand up for our families and tell ICE to do their own jobs. You decide if sexual assault will continue to be unreported. It's on you, and if you do nothing, that is a decision too.
Lori, Lori Berger, and Valerie Parker, and Maura Toro Morn.
I'm Lori Berger from 502 Blair Drive in Normal, and I'm here as a board member of the League of Women Voters of McLean County. So, the League of Women Voters of McLean County has based its support of the welcoming cities ordinance on the League of Women Voter U.S. position on immigration. The League of Women Voters of the U.S. President Chris Carson has stated the following. The League of Women Voters is opposed to deportation of noncriminal undocumented immigrants. The League supports cities, towns, counties, and states that makes a decision not to cooperate with federal deportation and enforcement actions that include noncriminal undocumented immigrants. Moreover, the Trump Administration's orders are of dubious legality. Kind words are great. We can say that we're welcoming. But in combination with policy, that is much, much more effective, and that really is what matters. And it's much more meaningful if immigrants have a policy that is based on an ordinance that Bloomington will support. So if we want to truly welcome our immigrants and keep families together, then we need to support and protect the immigrants that are in our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Valerie Parker, and Maura Toro Morn.
My name's Valerie Parker. I'm from 2912 Mockingbird Lane in Bloomington. I'm coming here, I was compelled to come tonight because actually I've been working as a licensed clinical professional counselor for the past 15 years in town. And so I've actually witnessed how difficult it is when children have their parent go to work one day, and then they are not, they're gone for two years because they end up becoming deported due to their immigration status. And so I felt like I needed to come here and just share my support for a city ordinance to help keep families safe and together. And to just share the trauma that the children still, even after their father came back, they were still afraid every time he were to go to work. And it, it just, it, it just creates, you know, lifelong trauma for these families. And I've also witnessed a lot of people not reporting sexual assault and domestic violence for fear that because they're undocumented, a lot of times their abusers will use their undocumented status against them, and then they're afraid to call the police. And so I just wanted to let you all know that I'm in support of this ordinance.
Thank you, Valerie. Maura Toro Morn.
Good evening. Buenas noches. My name is Maura Toro Morn, and I come to you as an educator in our community. I am an atheist of Puerto Rico. Our community prides itself, and for good reason, with two first-rate universities, two community colleges, and a host of high-ranked state schools. Last semester, I introduced my students to the stories of several documented students from Atlanta, Georgia. One in particular was heartbreaking. In fact, she was featured in the front page of the New York Times as well. Her name is Indira Islas. Indira threw herself into her studies because she wanted to be like her parents, a doctor. Her parents, both doctors, had escaped violence of the native state of Guerrero. She was a 4.0, high-achieving student, but as she began to contemplate the transition from high school to college, she realized that the dream of becoming a doctor was in jeopardy. She could not attend any of the state schools in Georgia because the state barred undocumented students from attending the state schools. She worked really hard and found out what she could to become a doctor. After a lot of struggles and through a program funded by private efforts, she was able to find a primarily African-American university, Delaware State in Dover, who welcomed her with open arms. In fact, 28 other students went also to Delaware State University. That most cherished transition of taking your child to get settled in college was denied to her parents because they too were undocumented. They could not afford to drive that far. Indira's parents are part of hard-working, highly-educated Mexican immigrants who now live in the shadows. And soon, Indira will live in the shadows as well because of the regressive and unjust immigration policies of the current administration. Yet even from the shadows, they managed to contribute to their communities by raising their children to believe in the American dream. Yesterday, I opened the first page of the New York Times to learn that there has been an arrest surge in the state of Georgia, Atlanta in particular. The picture caption in the New York Times is actually of a man, David Martinez, who, for all accounts and purposes, could be Indira's father. It used to be that federal guidelines focus only on serious criminals. Now the Trump Administration has raised those guidelines, allowing ICE to arrest and deport anyone. This is unacceptable, it's unjust, and it's outright un-American. I am here to ask you to send a message around the world and to the nation by your actions. Say to the world loud and clear that in our community, our wealth is measured by how much we care for each other. Our wealth is calculated by how we invest in each other's well-being. Our wealth is determined by how we embrace our diversity and the plurality of our lives. Say to the world and to the U.S. loud and clear that we're not going to submit to guidelines that are capricious and intended to hurt our neighbors, our families, our friends, our children. Please support the welcoming cities ordinance.
Thank you, Maura. Once again, I want to make it clear that we will be discussing this at a special session in December with several different options. And I want to make sure that, obviously, you all stay involved. And at some point after that, I can't promise a specific date when we would ask, when we would act, it, some of it will depend on what the nature of the discussion would be on, in, in December. Some of it would also depend on what are the things that we have between now and the end of the year. But I, as I have said before many times, I do strongly support a welcoming city ordinance as the mayor, and everybody should be welcome and should feel safe. Thank you. At this point, I would, I'd like us to, we need to move on to our consent agenda, and you are all certainly welcome to stay, although the consent agenda is rarely riveting. We may have some interesting, so, we have consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the Bloomington City Council, sorry, would like to pull from the agenda? Alderman Milliwamway.
Seven J.
Seven J. Any other items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item seven J?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman, how many, is there a second? Second by Alderman Painter. And if you go ahead and vote, an eye is in favor of the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item seven J. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Alderman Milliwamway.
Sure. I just wanted to offer what I consider a friendly amendment, because I'm a friendly kind of person.
We will take it in a friendly manner.
There you go. And Corporate Counsel Jeff Jergen helped me put this together. And really, it's very simple. I don't know if, does everybody have this? Copy of this? Okay, good. Diana, do you have it? Okay, all right, good. Okay. And what, basically, the, the change is, you know, rather than simply where it says, "No manager pro tempore." However, may appoint or remove a department director. I've asked Jeff to add, "Or any other employee that reports directly to the city manager pro tempore." Because I, I thought, you know, it was kind of reflective of the conversations that we, we've had before. If we left it to the directors, it would overlook, you know, other employees that report directly to, to the city managers, such as assistant city managers, communications manager as well. So, very simple, nothing.
Okay, so that's a motion to a friendly amendment due to the proposal. Is there a second? Second. Second by Alderman says. Any discussion on the amendment? Okay. A vote in favor then? We have a motion on the floor, and a second is in favor of the amendment? Well, the proposal is presented as amended by very friendly Alderman Milliwamway. Nine to zero. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, and I'm not sure why we're beeping. So, okay.
Mayor? If I could make a comment, since I am involved in this, I appreciate that friendly amendment, and I would just like to say that both here, in this position, and in the three cities where I've been a, a city administrator, I, I never would consider doing anything opposite to this anyway. Have always consulted with the City Council and always will, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve. Okay, at this point, we move on to our regular agenda, that apparently isn't quite as exciting, given the nature of the audience and size of the audience. We move on to item eight A, consideration of a resolution approving the Small Business Development Center funding agreement between the City of Bloomington, the Town of Normal, and the Bloomington-Normal Economic Development Council and Illinois Wesleyan University. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to Mr. Graham.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself as an employee of Wesleyan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. We last discussed this topic last week at the exciting Committee of the Whole meeting last week, and it's back on the agenda tonight as you advised staff at last week's meeting. Staff recommends that the city financially support the IW SBDC. The city's economic development strategic plan emphasizes the importance of supporting regional economic development efforts, including a Small Business Development Center with the goal of assisting startup and the development of new businesses in the community. The services offered by the SBDC help increase the capacity of the city's Office of Economic Development. So I, of course, strongly support and, and recommend that the council approve the funding agreement as proposed. Also, at last week's Committee of the Whole meeting, staff was directed to prepare the funding agreement with two different options, and there are two potential recommended motions for the council to consider. Option one is a 50-50 split between the city and the Town of Normal for the funding of the municipal portion of the joint funding of the SBDC. Option two is a 60-40 split. There is a slight typo in both of those that should say in the, a certain amount in 2017, a certain amount in 2018. In both, that alternate wording has been provided to you on paper. We have Kyle Hamm, the CEO of the Economic Development Council, here with us this evening, and also Karen Bouchon, the Executive Director of the Small Business Development Center at Iowa Wesleyan University as well, to answer any questions that you might have.
Excuse me. Start out with questions of Mr. Graham, comments. Alderman Black.
Thank you, and thank you, Austin and Kyle, for putting this together. We talked about this at length last meeting, and I always appreciate when we talk about something in the Committee of the Whole and then it comes back at a later meeting. I'd like to just go ahead and make a motion that we approve option one as presented.
Okay, is there a second to that option?
I'll second that motion.
We have a couple of seconds. So I'll go ahead and go with Alderman Bray. Further discussion on option one, which is a 50-50 split. Oh, Alderman, Alderman, excuse me.
I just have a question, because there were some favorable comments for the 60-40 last week. I'm just curious what the rationale is for 50-50 versus 60-40.
I guess that question directed to me.
Do anyone who wants to answer? I'm just curious.
I, I would just say that there's no, I, I haven't seen any evidence to suggest that the impact will be based on population. So somebody could, conceivably all be in Normal, could conceivably all be in Bloomington, or one community, 50-50. This is an excellent opportunity for us to have, make a major economic impact. We talked about that last week. I think 50-50 is the way to go.
Alderman, Matthew?
I was, there's too much to address.
Okay, now if, so Alderman Burgess.
Go ahead, if you wanted to.
No, go ahead.
I, I, follow-up question, but, and I understand that, I think that's very logical. We don't know where the economic impact of this, this facility will be, where these businesses will locate. But we do know there's a differential in terms of population, and so by a 50-50 split, what we are seeing is Town of Normal residents should pitch in more per capita than, than City of Bloomington residents. Or am I misunderstanding something?
I'm not saying that.
Wait, do you disagree that there's a differential in our population?
I'm being deposed here.
I just, what I'm seeing...
No, I think, I think there is, there obviously is an unmistakable difference between the population, but this, to me, is an economic piece, and the impact is, is not to be measured by population. Conceivably more people from Bloomington could take advantage of these services, but when we saw the report last week, it was all over our community and, and the county. So 50-50 just makes sense to me from a logical perspective.
And I can pitch in and address some of this, as far as my seconding his motion. There isn't any structure around how much the effort is spent towards a Bloomington population versus a normal population. And I don't think anyone has recommended that. I don't think anyone here recommends that. So if there's no guarantee that any of this will come to fruition as Bloomington payback, if you will, then we have as much skin in the game as, as anybody else, and that's 50-50. It's a 50-50 chance, two players, two towns, and we'll, we'll see who, you know, who gets some of this relief and assistance. And we hope that it'll be equal, but it could all go north. So for that reason... So for that reason, I think it's just kind of a chance for the two communities to work together and I'm voting 50-50. Thanks.
Alderman, Alderwoman Howman.
I'm in favor of the 60-40, it's a show of good faith to our friends north of Division Street and we're talking $9,000 difference. As far as I'm concerned, if an organization starts with a small business development center, whether it goes to Bloomington or Normal, we're, both communities are going to reap the benefits of having a new business in the community, whether it's whichever direction from Division Street it is.
Alderman Matthew.
I was just going to say I echo Diana's sentiments, I prefer to see the 60-40, the city, or the town of Normal asked us for it and I thought it would be an easy, good-faith effort to do 60-40. It seems more fair as a per populace into the game versus just the town versus the city, so.
Obviously our intergovernmental agreements are all over the place, but generally speaking, there has been a 60-40 split in population. One would assume that if there is an increase over, let's say, a 10-year period in economic development, because you can't really do it in one year to the next, that the community with the larger population would get roughly a proportionate share of those proceeds, but obviously that's a policy decision that this council right now has to make. Alderman Black, since you made the motion.
Yeah, causing trouble over here. Yeah, I just, I hope we don't get lost in this discussion, that the positive impact the SBA will make, I mean, looking at last week's report, in its 11 years of operation, it's served more than 750 small businesses and 2,000 people, attending workshops and seminars, created 187 new businesses and 889 new jobs, overtained about 1,600 jobs, increasing sales for clients. So this is a huge impact to our community, you know, I don't know where those numbers break down Bloomington Normal, I don't think about it that way, we're one community, this is a big impact, we'd be fools to miss this opportunity.
If I could maybe elaborate on some of the comments and, you know, when this draft agreement originally was working its way between myself and my counterpart at the town of Normal, you know, we talked about a number of different things and the way that the agreement could be structured, but then the funding agreement, you know, is proposed even from Wesleyan was, you know, using that default metric of 60-40, but as I look at the city's budget for economic development, you know, we have our funding for the Economic Development Council and it's $100,000 from the city of Bloomington and $100,000 from the town of Normal, so 50-50. So I thought, well, wouldn't the same sort of apply here in that we don't necessarily put a restriction on the BNEDC, that they must spend a certain amount of more time with city Bloomington businesses, or, you know, maybe there'll be years where city businesses benefit more than town of Normal businesses, difficult to say, but we know going into it, you know, an equal sharing with the EDC. Now additional research that was done here at the city was looking at other funding agreements between cities and small business development centers and we found evidence where one city required a certain amount of investment and time would be spent by the Small Business Development Center in a certain neighborhood of a city. So of course if we were to potentially, if the city were to put more assistance to the SBDC here, perhaps maybe we would want to put in a requirement in the agreement to say, well, the SBDC must spend more focus on Bloomington or a certain neighborhood of Bloomington. I don't think that we should necessarily do that, I think it should be open and observing of who all is there, but again getting into that would be, in my opinion, more of an equal sharing. Again, also looking at, let's see, sorry, I've lost my train of thought there, but, oh, historically, looking back through the archives of the pantograph, I found evidence of, you know, different businesses that were helped by the SBDC, both located in the city and in the town of Normal and even in Pontiac was one that was successfully mentioned. Now, there's probably many dozens of others that were very successful in other communities and here in the city and in the town that were helped by the ISU SBDC back in the day, those just didn't get the positive media coverages that those select few did. The length of the proposed agreement, that's what I was going to say, is three years, so, and actually, including this year that we're currently in, two more years into the future. If after the two years from now, we look back through which all businesses have been supported in which areas and we decide, wow, we need to majorly shift this, that could be an opportunity there, but it would be my recommendation to do the 50-50 at this point in this agreement here.
Okay, Alderman, excuse me, Alderwoman Howman.
Either way, thanks. The only other thing I wanted to add was Illinois Wesleyan is in Bloomington and it would be a way of supporting, not that we don't support ISU, but a way for us to support the university that's located here in our side of town, without trying to sound like making a division.
Right.
Any bigger than it already is.
Right, thank you. Alderwoman Burgess.
I just have two questions, number one, has the town of Normal voted on this yet?
They have not voted on it, we are taking the lead on it and spending the staff time and resources to put it out first. The comments that I've heard from staff of the town of Normal is that they would prefer the 60-40 split. I don't know if, that if you adopt it tonight and it gets sent up north of Division Street that they'll reject it, if they reject it or amend it, we could bring it back, you know, send it in the House type of thing, just have to see.
And then that was my second question, what happens if we pass a 50-50 and they pass a 60-40?
Then we could bring it back, or maybe the SBDC at Illinois Wesleyan closes because the town of Normal can't come up with an extra $12,000.
$9,000, I think. City Manager Steve Rasmussen.
One thing that might, one fact that might help, if you have that, is we talked about there being 187 small businesses helped, how does that break out? You gave some numbers, there are some in both places, but do we know what percentage of businesses have been helped in Bloomington versus what percentage have been helped in Normal?
I have an email here that Karen recently provided, that in the, almost a year that the SBDC has been opened, 53% of their clients have come from Bloomington, 20% from Normal, and 27% from surrounding communities.
I just got to say, I appreciate the question, that information is irrelevant to my decision here because whether, even if it were 75% in Normal and 25% in Bloomington, people don't look at Division Street on where they're working, those jobs that are created. What's important to me is that we get this organization funded in a way that's consistent with our philosophies and I think 50-50 is the way to do it and I'm ready to vote.
Okay, let's all make it clear, we're, there is no question about the value of the Economic Development Center. Okay. All right, at this point we have a motion on the floor that is 50-50 and the question is just whether or not we want to accept a 50-50 funding plan, or if this motion fails, I would certainly be willing to accept a 60-40 vote or motion, okay? So if everyone will please vote. There, it passes six to two, there are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Burgess and Alderman Howman.
And I wonder, I think at this point if we could let Alderwoman Schmidt back in the room.
Mayor, could, just, I'm not speaking for Amelia, but for myself, there was no way I wasn't going to fund this, it was just the split.
I think that's part of the reason why, that I tried to make the clarification, this was not, had nothing to do with the value of the center, it had to do with the mechanism for funding, right? Next we move to a consideration of an analysis proposal and approval of the Parking Street Garage Access Control Improvements Contract with Heartland Parking and this is in the amount of $910,000. And so Russ Waller, you are the lucky person who gets 10 minutes to tell us why.
Thank you Mayor, City Council, appreciate the opportunity to present this proposed improvements, much needed. I think the packet spoke pretty clearly as to the need for this, so I'm not going to spend a lot of time on that. I obviously will address questions you might have with regard to that after I'm done. I wanted to take this opportunity to show you the, essentially the proposed improvements, some of the improvements that we're planning on doing and then also the financial benefits of doing it, the potential financial benefits, and then also the potential financial consequences of not doing it, so.
Thank you Russ.
So, probably one of the biggest changes you will see if we move forward this is in the Lincoln Garage. And what you have is, the top picture is the existing configuration, it shows the parking booth where an employee sits in there and collects money for the daily parkers to exit. The lower left is a little rough, but basically it's a kind of a depiction of what it would look like if, once that parking booth is removed. The thing that's missing is we would have a device there for people to exit and pay as they leave. That's probably the most noticeable change to the entire thing, I just wanted to kind of give you a feel for what that would look like. Here's the actual devices that are being proposed to be installed. You have an entry device, essentially it's no different than a ticket spitter we have right now, where as you would enter, you pull a ticket to be able to then exit. A pay-on-foot device, so that is one of the big changes also, is that instead of the parking attendant sitting in the booth, people could go to a pay-on-foot device, one would be located in every single garage, you would pay for your, the amount of time you parked there, and then you would have a allotted amount of time to exit the garage and it would let, essentially that ticket would let you out. We also have the exit device, some of those will actually be pay-on-exit, so for persons that didn't want to go use the pay-on-foot, which will accept all denominations, coin, you know, money and credit and debit cards, people that don't want to hassle with that, if they actually choose a pay-on-exit device, they can exit, but they'll have to use a credit card or debit card. So those are the proposed devices that you'd see exiting. So on to, one of the other big reasons that we're proposing this is actual reports and there's a whole lot of data here, I'm just trying to show you all of the potential reports and I'm not even include all of them, there's hundreds upon hundreds of reports that we can get out of this. Our current system, we can't get any reports. So if you want to know how many people are using the parking garage, we can give you an estimate based on how many people are paying, but it's inaccurate data. The system we're using now is obsolete, we have to constantly dump the data because it overloads the system and so we don't have, you know, essentially accurate data that I would stand up here and give you any kind of reliable on how many people are using this garage or any of the garages. So just a couple of examples, the occupancy report, which is kind of what I'm talking about, is, you know, who's using the garage, are they daily parkers, are they monthly parkers, which that we have a good accurate count on because those people are paying monthly, but the daily parkers, we'd have no idea. We could also give you information on, okay, how long are they staying? You know, so if they're pulling into the garage, what's the likelihood, are they staying an hour, two hours, they stand all day? All of this information can be used and be brought back to you later on to make some decisions on how we want to operate the garage, potentially change the operations of the garage. Sample parking tickets, when you pull in, basically that'd be a ticket that you'd get that you'd scan, had to pay a foot or pay an exit to get out. Revenue and time report basically says, okay, here's, once again, how many people are staying and for how long and what kind of money do we make on that? A shift report essentially, so if you take for instance one day or a whole week, you could run a report and it would tell you basically anybody that parked in that garage, basically the percent of time they were there, the amount of money we got from them, whether it be a daily parker, we also have some account parks, people that have set up accounts and basically are paying for multiple people to park in the garage. So there's a lot of data and a lot of reports we can get out of that, which currently we cannot get. So moving on to the potential revenue increases, well, first the slide I showed you was the removal of that parking booth, well, right now an attendant sits there. When that attendant, assuming we move forward this, that attendant would no longer require to sit in that booth, we can get him back out on the street doing enforcement. So what I've done is shown you here the history of the parking citations, up until 2015, we actually had four parking enforcement officers. And in 2015, one of them took a job in the facilities department and that position has not been replaced. So what I did is I extrapolated that data from 2010 to 2015, showing the basically the three people providing citations versus four people citing, providing citations, extrapolated that into 2016 and 2017 to give you an idea of the additional potential citations that could be issued. Whoop, there we go. So it's a rough figure, but what we're estimating is about $40,000 annually in additional citations of getting that additional parking enforcement officer back out on the street.
But we don't necessarily have strong projections, would you say, for the additional revenues we get because of new facilities that we're putting in?
That is next. So citations were there, that was just a potential for citations with the additional enforcement, now we have what I got as a figure for the actual revenue, this is current revenue summary. So did a five-year average, you're looking at a grand total of about $675,000 per year, five-year average for all facilities combined. Once again, I extrapolated that, so it's approximations and this is if council chose to move the garages to a 24/7 operation, which is similar to what the town of Normal does. If we chose to do that, I basically took some figures, put in there approximations on additional parking customers we might receive by doing that, and there you see the $675,000 again, the additional revenue for changing that to a 24/7 operation could be about $400,000. That is also only if you choose to move it forward, we are not proposing to make any change to that tonight, we're just looking at changing the obsolete system that we currently have and then obviously with that data we could get from that new system, we could then come back to you later and the council could make some decisions on whether or not they wanted to make some changes to the operation.
Thank you.
Go ahead, any questions?
Questions. Alderwoman Burgess.
Sorry, just a quick one, the packet says the current system's about 12 years old and it's now obsolete.
That's correct.
Is that a typical lifespan for this type of systems?
Yeah, it would be comparable to like your computers, which obviously their lifespan is maybe about a month, but this is a similar type of system, it's all electronic-based, you get obviously a longer term than a computer out of this, but there's so much turnover in this industry where they're always coming out with new improvements, new and better ways to, essentially for people to access the garages, that, you know, it's typical and it's not so much that we, you can't fix it, we can fix it, we just can't find parts anymore. So we're now, we're robbing stuff out of the Pepsi I Center Garage to fix the other ones and so, you know, we can't continue to do that. The next time we have a major issue, we're done, we'll have to open the garage and collect no revenue, whatever garage gets impacted the worst. And unfortunately they all seem to act together, with the exception of Pepsi I, since it's no longer functioning, but Market and Lincoln, when one goes down, they all go down. So inaction essentially, and I could back up to that slide, but inaction is if that happens, we stand the potential to lose about $675,000 a year until we get them fixed. Because there's really no way to police that with no control and no access control in place.
Alderman Matthew and then Moboka and Painter.
Thanks for putting this together, Russ. Is there such a thing as a guaranteed life cycle at all? So I know, for instance, in the computer industry, for a lot of the high-end servers, they will say that we are going to continue this line with parts available to make repairs and stuff for 10 years. You know, is there such a thing that exists for these sort of parking meters?
Not so much in that, there is no guarantee that they'll continue to make parts for that, that like the period, I, you know, I suspect they will. The one thing that is included in this proposal is we did kind of think of what exactly you're talking about here, is worrying about, okay, what happens when this becomes obsolete or what happens with problems. So into this proposal, we asked for a six-year warranty. So this warranty basically is any kind of damage, any kind of problems with the equipment, they will come out and repair it, replace it for free. That is an additional cost that was included in the bid proposal, I didn't, I don't think I provided a complete breakdown, but we could provide that if you wanted. It was actually not a whole lot of money for that additional warranty. Essentially, I think that goes to speak that they're expecting the system to last a long time, not expecting to have problems with it, so the additional cost for the extended warranty was minimal, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, but based on the total price, it was reasonable we thought. That's obviously something if you chose to, we could eliminate that and go with the standard warranty, which is just one year.
Second question I had was with the numbers that you showed, the revenue numbers, so right now the Market Street Garage, the bottom floor is four hours free parking and then you can't access the top floors unless you're a monthly subscriber to the garage, do you envision changing that to allow access to the upper floors?
Yeah, that was with the proposal, is we did not change the four-hour free parking in the lower level, the projections I put on there were essentially opening up the upper level to anybody to park daily, no different than you have over in the Lincoln Garage.
Okay, I was just curious on that one. And then the, I just, not necessarily a question, but just a general statement that I would not support going to 24/7 parking in the garages because we have an awful lot of people right now that we have tried to encourage to say, if you are going to consume adult beverages, maybe it's best to park in the garage and get a ride home at night and I don't want to kind of change that mentality, I want to put your car in the garage, it'll be safe when you come back, get home safely, drive- drive your car home when you're sober. So I'm not, I don't think I want to change that particular part of it, so.
Totally understandable. Like I said, that is not part of what we're proposing tonight. It's just to replace the obsolete gates and system.
Alderman Longway.
Okay. Just a very quick question. Are you able to use your phone to pay for parking with the system?
Yes, you will be able to. That will take some changes, I think, in-house that we have to modify, but yes, the system is capable of modification, pay-in online. You can actually, the system allows you to log in and pre-purchase your parking ticket. So if you know you're coming, you got someone coming, and you want to pay for them to come and park downtown, you can log in and pay that. I think, I know we can get their R and I in, but that'll be some changes we'll have to make. It's just not the way we typically do business here, but it's doable.
Okay, okay. Well, I would be strongly in favor of that because I know a lot of people don't, no longer use credit cards and cash and coins and things like that.
There are, and we've thought about that option, is basically not providing the pay-on-foot. The problem we have is, okay, someone, because there are still a few holdouts that don't carry credit cards and don't believe in that. And so if we get a customer that comes in, you know, pulls his ticket and goes in and then has no way to exit, you know, because he didn't have a credit card, we can't, unfortunately, we can't eliminate that option and save some money. We have to provide that the way we're serving every customer that does use the parking garage.
I'm one of those holdouts. I just got a pass today.
I understand.
Thank you. Alderman Painter.
Thank you, Russ. There's been a lot of talk about redoing the Market Street Garage. So if we do that, can we take this system out and put it back in when it's refurbished?
Absolutely, yeah. It's not free, obviously, so if we did choose to remove the garage, Lincoln, any of the garages, quite honestly, from service, you would be able to take those out, put them in storage, repurpose them in a different lot or a different garage. Any of that's possible, it just obviously comes with a cost. The contractor's not going to warranty that essentially, that we would have to pay an additional cost for that service if it came up in the future. But yeah, it, nothing is essentially, it is mounted, you know, essentially permanently. By the way, it's not, you know, somebody can't walk off with it, but it's still, it's removable and repurposable.
Okay, thank you.
As a follow-up to that, before we go to Alderman Black, would that invalidate our warranty that we've purchased?
No.
Okay, it just means they wouldn't warranty whatever we did in terms of pulling it out.
Right, and we would not do that. We would actually probably hire the same contractor to come and do that for us. We're not in that business to be able to move those.
That's an excellent question. I hadn't even thought about that. Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Painter. Alderman Black, and then Hellman.
Thank you, and thank you for putting this together. There's, I appreciate just how detailed that presentation was and what we saw in the packet on how different criteria everything was evaluated. I'll just share my opinion, which is that I think we do this backwards. You know, a lot of cities, what they do to combat some traffic issues, they charge for parking on the street and they open up free garages to get people to park in those garages and then walk to their destination. Ideally, we get people using Uber and eventually self-driving cars are going to be here, so you know, this question may be moot in, you know, 20 years. I'm probably going to begrudgingly support it. I think we should be doing more automation and I can show Moboka how to use the cell phone app at some point in time if he's interested.
I know how to read.
Okay, okay. Choice, I know. But I mean, every major city I go to has this sort of technology, and we should be doing more of these types of automation. You know, we can get our staff doing some other things besides just parking enforcement. I know the Downtown Task Force is going to be having some recommendations that go along with these sorts of things at some point in time in the future. So I hope that we consider that because I think parking downtown is always a hot topic, and I continue to hear people say there's no parking when that isn't necessarily the case. And you could do things where you charge for street parking in front of businesses. Never the case. Exactly, yeah. You can charge for street parking, and then maybe you have, you scan your receipt with a QR code if you buy an item from a business there. That creates a traffic flow. I mean, high cost of free parking, check it out. It walks the problems that we've created for ourselves when it comes to parking. The other piece I would say is that I remember a couple of years ago, a suggestion was made that the parking lot across from the Government Center, right between Anjou and Epiphany and the Government Center, that those city vehicles on the weekends park in the garage, perhaps in the top story because it tends not to be as crowded during the weekends. Is that something that we can do?
That's the next topic on our agenda.
Yeah.
It's on the agenda.
Yes. What I want to say about that is that that's something that people talk about a lot, and I'm glad that we're discussing that, but ultimately, I know that we talked about the two hours, people moving it every little bit to avoid that sort of thing. But that would make a big dramatic increase in visible parking on the weekends. And then to Alderman Mathie's point, discouraging people from taking a ride home after enjoying our wonderful downtown.
Thank you. Alderman Hellman.
Thanks for the information and what you've done here. I guess my question is, I emailed Patty Lynn because I was late in getting through the packet today for tonight's meeting, and I asked her if we make money on our parking garages. And garages, street parking, monitors, you know, fees for parking violations, and I don't have specifics here, but she said we bring in less than we spend in Market and the Pepsi Center, and Lincoln garages hit or miss. So I guess my question is, why do we want to spend $900,000 if we could open the garages up and encourage people to come downtown and park in them for free?
Well, I can answer, I can address one of those. So the Lincoln garage itself, we don't own. The Lincoln garage is owned by the Public Building Commission. And in order to do what you're proposing, to basically make them free, we would have to get them to approve that, essentially, and the county to approve that, and I doubt they're probably willing to do that. Because their expectation is we make enough money in a Lincoln garage to pay for its repairs for its upkeep. And that's, I think, as you found out with your discussion with Patty Lynn, is that that's, give or take, sometimes we make it, sometimes we don't. I can tell you that we do not make enough money to pay for all the repairs and maintenance and the debt service on it. That does not happen.
Yeah.
If you remove the debt service, and that's a report that the county had been asking for, and we've been providing now monthly, if you remove the debt service, it's about a wash. So we do make enough money to essentially kind of upkeep and maintain it. It does not, unfortunately, at this point, make enough to do major repairs like the one we're talking about here. We have to do a major improvement, it'll be a capital improvement. We don't make that kind of money on it, unfortunately.
Great, thanks.
Alderman Bray.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the information. And so just kind of a check-in on approaching this problem, and the solution that's presented here is to purchase these very expensive machines to do this parking, I guess, tracking and collection and the like. Is there no market for leased machines rather than this big buy, this big purchase of over $900,000?
We actually didn't look into that, but it's unlikely. I think what you find is that the company that's proposing it, the only single bidder we had, Heartland Parking, will do that, but they want to take over complete management of the garage. So they will come in, they will install the machines, they do everything, and then they take their cut off the top to make sure they're actually making enough money to pay for those machines, to pay for their time, to pay for their staff. And so, quite honestly, then you're giving all of the potential revenue that you could make off of that to this company to manage it. That's, that's not exactly the way the town of Normal works, but it's similar. They do have Heartland Parking manage their entire parking system, their parking garages, but they actually do do the capital expenses and pay for the equipment themselves, but then they have Heartland Parking manage the rest of it. They manage the gates, they manage the maintenance of it, the minor maintenance, not major, and just take care of all the operations. So there are some hybrid-type systems, kind of what you're talking about, but I've not run across any where you can just lease the equipment. The only way we'd do that would be like a capital lease instead of just a straight-out capital purchase.
So there's an opportunity to potentially lease, but then you give up some ownership and of course, some of the revenues.
Yeah.
You give up some, I guess, decision-making in regards to setting of the rates. Is that one of the pain points?
We didn't get that far into those discussions with Heartland. Because, quite honestly, we didn't pursue that we were going to pursue anything like that, especially with the Public Building Commission involved with the process. They, their expectation is we make money to pay for the maintenance. And so the best way to do that is to actually invest in the, you know, the existing building, the existing facility, and then be able to take as much revenue out of it as we can. And so purchasing the equipment and then being able to recuperate that with either 24/7 operation, which I know is mixed feelings here, but that would be the best opportunity to gain more revenue from the system, is to turn it into 24/7 operation and recoup as much money as we can, so.
Okay, we are out of time, but Alderman Schmidt.
I will make this brief. I'm very sympathetic to the comments that Scott and Diana made and want to know what would happen if we perhaps didn't install this in the Market Street Garage. Suppose we went with Lincoln and Pepsi Ice Center and we opened up Market and to see what would happen if it's free. We're still putting people out on this, you know, out doing parking enforcement, we're presumably attracting people to park, not on the street but in a garage. So what are the dynamics of that? What am I missing?
Well, that's definitely an opportunity. So I think, right now, the Market Street Garage, it's about 550 spaces. About 350 to 400 of those spaces are leased. We actually have lease agreements, you know, monthly clients. So I think that would be your biggest problem right there, is if we essentially said we're no longer going to lease spaces in the Market Garage, it's kind of a free-for-all.
Would you have to say that you're no longer leasing spaces? I mean, if I wanted to guarantee that my employees had a spot in Market Street Garage, couldn't we still continue to lease spaces with some, like a hang tag or something else like I would have to use in my employment?
Sure, you could do a hang tag. The problem with a hang tag is that when you combine that many cars in one spot, you pretty much have to devote a person to police that garage 24 hours a day, or at least during the time that you're essentially leasing the spots. Because for someone to actually drive through that garage or walk through that garage consistently to ensure that we're honoring and basically holding enough spaces for the people that are going to lease it, you're devoting a whole person to that, essentially, that operation. So then you're, once again, it's really no different than what you have right now with the Lincoln Garage. You're taking that person off of the street and that their enforcement, that maybe could be better used somewhere else. So that, to me, that's your biggest issue, is that all of those people that lease spaces will truly be upset because they now know, have no guarantee that the spot that they're paying $50 a month for is going to be there for them. And I think, opening up, making it free, it'd be real tough to ensure that those people have spaces, even with someone dedicated to that. Because I guess what it comes into is, you would, in addition to having hang tags, you would almost have to mark the spaces as reserved. Because if it's free parking and you don't have anything marked as reserved, the people that come there and park there, leave their vehicle there, there's no right to tow them.
Yeah, and I don't want to waste a whole lot more time on this, but, and there are no options to allow people with leased spaces to go through with a far less complicated system that doesn't require payment or anything like that, but actually is, you know, some recognition of, here's, you know, here's my QR code or whatever, or phone.
We did, there's a couple of systems out there like you're talking about where there is no gates. It's basically free access. What you do is similar to Moboka's suggestion, or maybe his issue with using your smartphone to pay, you can do that. Basically, you can prepay and essentially buy a space in the garage on a daily basis or whatever, whenever you choose to go in there. But you're right back to that policing option, is that you then have to send someone through that garage repetitively through the entire day to make sure that those people that have paid for that, whatever allotted time they've chosen to be there, are either ticketed or eventually maybe even removed by towing if they choose not to move. So, and essentially, it's a gateless system. We did have some people coming to talk to us about that system. The problem we have with that is you're right back to, it's a very labor-intensive manpower requirements to be able to police that.
Alderman Hellman, do you have a motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Thank you. I move that the unit prices and contract with Heartland Parking, Inc. for the parking garage access control improvements, RFP 2018-09, in the amount of $910,155.73 be approved, and authorize the city manager and city clerk to execute necessary contract documents.
Is there a second?
Come on, somebody, I can spit on that. Second.
Second by Alderman Burgess. Okay, at this point, we vote on the motion on the floor. If that doesn't pass, then I will be happy to entertain another motion. The motion passes seven to two, there are two nays to announce, Madam Clerk.
I know, I know, I know. Alderman Mathie and Alderman Black.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, but you're not going very far. We have item C, consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 29 to clarify time limits in the Government Center parking lot and establish a process for issuance of temporary parking permits. And we have a 10-minute and 10-minute budget.
I won't take 10 minutes on this one. This is pretty simple. Once again, I think the packet explained kind of the need for what we're doing here. So here, I'm going to just, I'll explain a little bit of that, but I'm going to go on to some of the other inconsistencies that I think we need to correct in this lot. But we were approached by the McLean County government about what we're going to call parking shuffling. Currently, the code says that it's two hours parking, but there is nothing that defines that you can only park once per day. We have that in other lots, the Major Butler Lot is that, the lower level, the Market Street Garage is, and the difference is those are four hours, and the Pepsi Ice Center Garage, those are once per day for up to four hours in those other two lots. So the only difference we're proposing here is it's the same kind of once-per-day parking, but it's only limited to two hours per day. And that essentially is to allow people that are coming to the Government Center for business to have ample places to park. So here's an entry sign, one of two entry signs to the lot. The main thing I'm showing there is, to me, that's confusing. It says free parking. Free parking, so do you pay other times? It also has, it's basically, the operations are 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM. That's essentially when it's free parking, but, so from those off-times is when you either pay, or it's only for Government Center employees. So that's a very confusing sign.
Can we redesign that one that says parking and then free?
Yeah, exactly.
And then the limitations.
Well, obviously, there's some much-needed changes on the lot. Regardless of this code change, there's some changes we need to make to the signs. So we go from this sign to some of the interior signs. So on the previous sign, it was from, I believe it was, let me back up, make sure, yeah, 6:00 PM. This one's 5:00 PM. So we're not even consistent in our signs. And then if you look at the top sign, basically, it's restricted parking, or non-restricted parking, basically, those times, and then the two-hour parking below it. So once again, I think we have some very confusing signs in that lot. The one you can't read is the lot, the signs, and there's multiple signs on that, that's along Anjou. All that is, is the same sign that you're looking above there where it says non-restricted parking. It does not have the two-hour parking sign below it on any of those spaces on Anjou. So quite honestly, that's non-restricted parking, because we don't really have a proper signage in the lot. So one of the big things I think we need to do regardless of whether or not we proceed with the code change is to clean up the signage in this lot. So we're using this opportunity to do that, regardless of your decision on the code change, we need to do that, but we obviously don't want to repeat it, so assuming you do approve the code change, then we could do an all-encompassing improvement. Some more signs, the one thing here, we do have some EV parking, so that's, obviously those would stay, and those would be restricted to the two hours once per day, unless that's something that you wanted to amend the proposal. We weren't planning on making any special accommodations for the two EV spaces that are there. So that's something that's subject to change based on your pleasure. The other thing there is the Government Center. So the M-plate license parking that we talked about, that's actually, according to that sign, it's restricted to only Government Center employees. So one of the problems we have there is that there are employees from the county and the city that are not Government Center employees. They drive in from other locations. By rights, they're not allowed to park there. So we're trying to clean that up because the point of the Government Center, the M-plates, is to allow people that are traveling to a meeting at the Government Center to have a space to park for a short period of time for a quick meeting. So that needs to be addressed.
And then also to note that it's only certain hours.
And once again, only certain hours. Now, that, the proposed change, and I can get to that right here. So what you have there on my left is the existing parking layout. So the blue is the M-plate, there's 31 spaces currently in the lot that are designated for M-plate, and that's essentially during business hours. And it's either essentially 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM or 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, depending on which sign you read. And then the, the yellow ones are the two-hour spaces. And then we also, and I did not correct that, this one right along here was supposed to be a different color. Unfortunately, I didn't get that changed. But that is actually employee parking. There are seven spaces there that is for the Parks and Recreation employees. So what we are proposing to change, in addition to the two-hour limitation once per day, is we're going to take, of the 31 spaces, we're going to take all but 10 of those and move them to the Lincoln Lot. So we do want to leave some M-plate spaces in there, as I explained earlier, for those out of town, whether it be a government, a McLean County government employee or a city employee that are coming from a different office, we want to give some spaces for them to come to a, to our meeting and to be able to park reasonably and not have to, to get into the deck and worry about paying. That's essentially, they are going to be limited to, that won't be by sign, that will be by policy. We're going to limit them to two hours, and other than that, if they're parking there, they need to be parking in the, in the Lincoln Deck. So those will get moved, those additional spaces will get moved to the Lincoln Garage. The Parks and Rec employee parking that was here will get removed and they will get moved to the Lincoln Garage. So we are going from 58 two-hour spaces to proposed 86 two-hour spaces.
Great.
And then the last thing, which also is in this proposed change, is the temporary parking permit.
And would this be for the county board?
No, actually, it's not. This is, it, it could be used for that, but quite honestly, the, the need is for contractors. Contractors and utility companies that are working in the downtown area with all our time limitations, various time limitations, it's very difficult for them to do any work. So if they have a job going down, take for instance, the work that's going on with the, the NiCor gas upgrade. There's, they do use parking spaces, and they do get ticketed if they don't come in and get a permit. But that's very inconvenient, they're constantly have to move their vehicle, they can't get a whole lot of work done. So we allow them to come in to purchase a temporary parking permit. They can be purchased on a daily basis or a monthly basis, and we only issue a limited amount for each contractor, just to avoid one contractor coming in and kind of overwhelming everything. So they come in, the max we will issue them is for a month. That way, after a month, they have to come back and either renew it and pay for another one. But essentially, what it does is it avoids the time limitations in downtown. So they can park in a spot, not worry about their vehicle getting ticketed or towed, and essentially get, get the work done in a, in a efficient manner. So that was an issue that, no, we're just trying to clean up in the code, because there's nothing in code for a process that we're currently doing.
Questions, Russ.
Just interested in knowing, has Tricia and the DBA reviewed this too, thinking about business impact and the two-hour time limit?
Yeah, this was discussed at our, our standing Downtown Traffic Committee meeting. Obviously, she did have concerns with some of the impacts to businesses, but the, she was supportive of the two-hour because that provides turnover in that lot. So anybody coming to the government center or nearby would have time to come in and do business. A two-hour time limit seems to be a reasonable amount of time to come in and do business, kind of standard business. If you get longer than two hours, then the intent is to go park in the Lincoln Garage. At a dollar an hour, you're not going to have to spend a lot of money.
Other questions? Okay, is there a motion?
Sure. I'll move that the ordinance amending Chapter 29, Sections 128, 130, and 154 be passed and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Schmidt. All right, if everyone will vote, thank you. Motion carries nine to zero, there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. And talk about efficiency. We already have Mr. Karch getting ready to present on Brick Streets, other non-controversial subject.
Take it away.
Take it away, please.
Mayor City Council, whenever I started in 2008 as the Public Works Director, it wasn't more than a year later, whenever we really put forward the first master plan. We tried in 2009 to craft a Brick Street Master Plan, kind of going off this whole premise that we've been very consistent in public works. We need to rate what we have so we can have a plan of where we're going. Over these years, we've done that consistently, time after time with different pieces of infrastructure. In this case, we're bringing back to you an upgraded, very improved Brick Street Master Plan. In the back, Michael Hill, I'll give full credit to him, he has just done a tremendous job in our department of upgrading a very poor original master plan, my first shot at a master plan, he really upgraded that significantly. So all in-house, our own staff did this work, no consultant dollars were paid. April 24th, you as a council gave unanimous approval for us as a staff to craft this master plan. We have gone through a robust process with both citizens and different boards. Sherri Grayling was orig, oh, thank you very much, yes, she's right in the front row now, originally was in the back, she came to the front. My thanks to her, and then she's representing the Historic Preservation Commission as the chairwoman. She also did a wonderful job throughout the process, we had multiple meetings with them. There was a unanimous approval from the Historic Preservation Commission on this plan, and then we also received unanimous approval from the Planning Commission. And so again, tonight, we've, we've already had a committee of the whole meeting with you, and so we're asking tonight for your approval of this plan. We'll talk to you a little bit about it, but the, the intention is to be very systematic in our ratings of everything and be able to provide a long-term plan of what we do with our Brick Streets. Over the long haul, we are looking at a $7.4 million cost for this plan, but what I'll tell you is that's very preliminary. We'll get into that in a little bit, but it's very preliminary because in Bloomington, we don't have a lot of examples of what we can go off of. Sidewalks, we have a lot of dollars. Street resurfacing, we have a lot of dollars, all of those things. Bricks, there's not a lot of tangible things we can go off of to really give you good cost estimates. In this plan, we look at doing philosophical changes to how we assess the Brick Streets, preserving what we have. We are looking at ordinance changes, that's some key things that we don't have, the master plan will set the stage for us to bring back to these ordinance changes in December and January, looking at some key things that hopefully you will pass this tonight, and when you do, one of the things we want to bring back is how do you deal with those utility cuts? How do you stop and just preserve what we have, even if we don't do massive overhauls or add new Brick Streets? How do we just preserve what we have and then look to the future when better funding becomes available? Well, utility cuts and patching is one of the key damages to our Brick Streets, and so we need to be able to stop that and find some way to be able to deal with that on an annual basis. We also want to deal with complete streets and how that ties in, and then truck routes. We've dealt with that, and on a case-by-case basis, as staff, we recommend coming back and dealing with trucks. Trucks, heavy trucks do a lot of damage to Brick Streets, they damage the basins, so we want to restrict through-truck movements on our Brick Streets. So we've looked at every one of our 37 Brick Streets, we have extensive data in this, again, a 57-page document. We do, as a staff, plan on taking this to the National APWA. As we did, we won an award with our sidewalk master plan that was done in-house. We plan on doing the same exact thing with this Brick Street Master Plan. We've talked to other communities, and others feel like this is one of the best plans they have seen. So we've already have other communities coming and using this document, because we've really kind of reached out, and you can see in our references, we've reached out to a lot of others. This plan isn't an end-all-be-all, though, I will say. It is a start, there are other facets, we were not able to be comprehensive in every facet. We did the best we could to be able to come up with a quick plan, but then in the future, there are other things we can do as opportunities arise, as funding arises, as interest arises. But we wanted at least set the stage and get a foundation level so we can have some policy for staff to go off of. Since 2009, we have already lost multiple Brick Streets that were there, Elm, Chestnut, East Street, there were multiple areas without a policy, staff just goes off of and does the best that we can. So we need to have some sort of a council direction on this piece of infrastructure. What it is important to say, though, is there's no funding source tied to this plan, but that doesn't prevent you from passing it. I know that can be some hesitation, but I want to make sure that it's clear that we did that with a sewer master plan, it took a couple of years to be able to, to find how do we want to deal with this, but staff as a whole is really looking for some direction on, this is a piece of, this is a piece of infrastructure, and we did what the council asked them, are bringing this back to you. So again, where the next item, we're separating this, the next item on the, on the agenda is going to be Monroe, and we'll talk about that, that's an immediate choice for you to look at for spending, but I'm going to ask that you consider the two of them independently, and that's what we'll be looking at with this Brick Street Master Plan. So the, with this, again, we would be bringing, if you pass this tonight, we'd be looking at bringing some of the ordinances back to you. I'm going to go ahead and say January, because I'd like to under-promise and over-deliver, but we'll bring those back to you once we have an approved plan. Then as part of the budget process, depending on your actions tonight with Monroe, we could then go through design and look at next year's construction budget to do maybe even the first street, depending on how the prioritization for Brick Streets shakes out. At this point, I'd address any questions that you have.
Questions to Mr. Karch. Alderman Mathie.
I will just say thank you for putting this together. I love all the parts of this that work towards preserving the streets that we have left and the requirements for, you know, that you're talking about for how to fix them after we have to dig them up and do utility repairs and things of that nature. So I love all those parts of this, but like you said, is, is, this is, is difficult because we still haven't had the big discussions for the big massive parts of the budget we're talking about yet. So, you know, I would be fully supportive of this plan if it didn't, you know, or if we, we said we wanted to amend it and, and take out the numbers, the, the 10-year spending plan for right now, until we have that bigger discussion, you know? I want to preserve things, put policies in place to stop things from being eroded anymore, but we need to have those bigger policy discussions on the budget and the capital improvements plan before we accidentally set expectations for people that in 2020, we're coming down your road and we're repairing this Brick Street. I don't want to set those expectations for people until we've had all those other discussions that are going to be far more difficult, so.
Very fair, from a council perspective, I need you to know that even if you change that from a year one or put years on it, take that off, phase one, phase two, it doesn't bind you, these are recommendations, they can be, you know, they, it's going to, and then eventually be policy-level decisions for our council. So, great point, the other facet I would ask of this, if you did pass this tonight, even if there are no streets immediately addressed, a key piece of it that does need to happen if it's passed, we're asking for a $100,000 maintenance contract. I think that's a small dollar that would allow us to address this last year. I put the end to replacing Brick Streets with concrete patches if they're dug up. Now there are multiple streets with gravel patches that we're waiting for this to be passed, and we'd like to be able to have some sort of a maintenance contract so we can try pilot areas, deal with what we have, be able to get sort of that, let's figure out some dollar figures, maybe we can have some better information for our council moving forward, but we need to have some place to start. So that's, that, those are some additional feedback for you.
Alderman Bergus, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I would be absolutely in favor of that. It's one of those things that we, we talked about in budgeting in business, we called it shooting bullets before we launch cannons. So I'd be in favor of that kind of a maintenance contract and see where we went.
Alderman Bergus, sorry.
I think Alderman Schmidt was next.
Oh, was she? Alderman Schmidt.
I just wanted to clarify the resolution itself, that, that we are passing the resolution which has no dollars attached to it.
Yes, once again, this, this plan that you're looking at, there's no funding source commitment in this, this doesn't bind you to any expenditures. That $100,000 I just mentioned would be part of the next budget cycle, your consideration of that.
Right, so this sets the stage then for us to look at what proportion of our street resurfacing that we're able to commit to this.
Or a different funding source, yes, exactly, not necessarily a portion of the street resurfacing.
And I want to say thank you for continuing to work on this and not losing faith, it's a, it's a good plan.
Thanks. Alderman Bergus.
Yeah, I think first and foremost, I mean, just the staff and Historic Preservation Commission, the Planning Commission, and the Community Development Department, the Public Works Department, all work together to create a really comprehensive model for potentially moving forward. And, and I think that, just to go back to April of this year, the implementation strategy is, is actually exactly what we asked for from the Historic Preservation Commission when we sent it back with unanimous vote, because, and I think that was an important part of it, while it may be aspirational, I think we as a council need to know what we are looking at here in order to preserve Brick Streets, so that we can be ready to determine whether or not we're truly ready to commit, because what we cannot do is pass a plan with no intention of seeing it come to fruition. That's not fair to the residents on these streets, and, and, well, it's not fair to the residents of the city, period. I think when we pass these plans, it needs to come along with the very strong desire to see it accomplished. We may have limitations, well, may, may have is generous. We will have limitations, we will not be able to achieve everything we want to in the timeframe we want to, but I think we need to have a realistic understanding of what the costs are so we can make those difficult decisions, and we, and we can make those decisions moving forward, because the other thing we have to keep in mind is, our residents are also making decisions, especially on these streets. Those streets in the reconstruct category, residents don't have many options moving forward. They greatly prefer to maintain the Brick Streets, to have them reconstructed, but they're in such poor condition that if we're not willing to spend what it is necessary to reconstruct them and to return them to a functional level, they understand, then they can make a decision about whether or not they accept things the way they are or move in a, in a resurfacing direction. And I think it's only fair that we, we, we be as, as open and transparent and as processed as possible. So, so I think, you know, again, hats off, this plan is, is really nice, and I really appreciate that there are the best numbers we can put in there, so we know what this means and can plan accordingly. Thank you.
Alderman Howman.
Thanks, and I appreciate the collaborative effort that went into this, that says a lot, that there were different groups willing to come together. Julian said in, in public comment that he's seen his street deteriorate over the 10 years, so my concern is if we pass this, but we don't know where the funding's going to come from, it's like, it just, I, I'm not connecting the dots there. So my, I have two questions related to funding, and we may be off topic a little bit, but are there other funding sources available, other grants available that might help with this? And would it be possible to ask the residents and businesses that are on the Brick Streets if they'd be willing to help pay for this, you know, like a special assessment?
Do a couple of different questions in there. So Alderman Howman, I'll try to address some, first, grants. We have tried to look at that, we will continue to see any opportunities we can. An approved master plan is the baseline for any sort of a grant application, so, so yes, we'll continue to, you know, to look at that as an option. We don't know of one right now, but even things like CDBG funds can be used, there can be some other funding sources, but those are always coveted dollars, too, there's so many different things you could use them for. I will say by passing this, if the council passes this tonight, as a staff, I would be, no matter what, bringing that $100,000 into the budget for consideration next year for maintenance contract, because that would provide just a baseline for us to kind of stop the bleeding, so to speak, of our Brick Streets, allow for there to be a baseline. If, if you look, and we'll, we'll do in the next presentation for Monroe, I'll show you pictures, and you'll get to see some of what Julian had talked about with his street and showing some of the areas that have been patched, and you can see how they've been pervasive, and, and this, this maintenance contract would kind of, it wouldn't be the end-all-be-all, but it would start to give us data, it would start to give us some numbers in the future. And then your last question dealt with, what's that?
An assessment, a special assessment.
Special assessment, that was originally in the first 2009 master plan consideration. That can be controversial, and so honestly, we pulled it out. It was one of those, it didn't have a lot, it had variable support, some wanted it, some didn't. Again, this is not an end-all-be-all. If our, if our council passed this and wanted to look at that as a policy-level decision, that can happen. That could happen regardless, there is, it'd be, Illinois state law allows for an SSA if 51% of the people wanted to put forth and move forward with that, they could do that regardless of any policy action by our council. But that's why we said, well, let's not even put it in there. But if you wanted that in the future, in a, in a future consideration, we absolutely could look at that.
I'm looking at the strategic plan significance, and, I mean, there's just a couple of things that, budget with adequate resources to support defined services and level of services. Well, we don't have a, we don't have a budget for this. Most cost-effective and efficient manner. Well, this may be cost-effective and efficient for Brick Streets, but in terms of the number of streets that we have that need resurfacing, I'm not sure it's the best use of, of money. And then well-planned city with necessary services and infrastructure, and again, I'm just having a difficult time with, with Brick Streets, given the other, all the other needs that we have, so that's, sorry.
Alderman Black, and then we'll go back around. It's Alderman Sage.
Thank you. And Jim, let me echo too, my thanks to the staff, because this is a tremendous master plan. I have two or three different types of questions. First of all, if memory serves me right, I'm not sure, do we have other master plans that have, have a spending plan embedded in them? Or do we simply have master plans that, that kind of talk about the whats, if you will, and then staff goes and, and, you know, kind of, kind of parcels out the, the different parts of the comprehensive plan and brings those back as, as budgeted items and so forth? I, I don't really recall seeing another master plan that has a 10-year proposed spending in it, but, but maybe I could be wrong.
No, no, it's okay, we, it does vary, you are correct, some do and some don't. We did the Brick Street Master Plan, we modeled it after the Sidewalk Master Plan. That went well, it was successful, we reused a lot of the different pieces and kind of that template, and the Sidewalk Master Plan, I think honestly, has been extremely successful, well-received by citizens, it is very, it's a policy successful, well received by citizens. It is very, it's a policy level document, but also sets a 10-year spending plan that after 10 years, we even let the council know, if you consistently meet this spending plan, here's where you will be. So we set service level existing, we set proposed. That was a staff-driven document and you as a council have been meeting, close to, close to meeting those funding levels. And I think that because of that, we've been able to be responsive with sidewalk expenditures and requests and, and so it's been very well received. So this would be similar.
Okay. Um, the, a specific question about the hundred and twenty seven thousand and twenty four dollars. That is the maintenance piece you're, you're asking for?
Now, this is going to be in the next item. That is going to be tied to Monroe. So if it's okay, we, this is dealing with the master plan. Now, the next piece is going to be that first, first year, first phase. And that's, that piece is going to be the engineering services associated with the design and construction inspection of that first and highest priority Monroe Street from Robinson to Clinton. So that'll be addressed in our next council item. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, yeah, it says in the financial impact, it references, and this is in the agenda item for the plan itself. And, um, what I'm looking at is, shows up as 295 of 313. But, um, I was just looking for a little clarification on what the hundred and twenty seven thousand and twenty four dollars is, is actually intended for.
Um, my apologies. I'm, uh, looking at, uh, item 8D. Um, if you would be able to help me out, my apologies, Alderman Sage.
And that's okay. While you're looking at that, let me follow up, I guess Karen, on a comment that you made. Here, here's my concern. And, and, and we, we talked about it a little bit in, in the, the committee, the whole meeting when we talked about this was if, without a dedicated revenue stream and without considering this with, with, within some larger prioritization of, of all of the other infrastructure needs, I'm concerned that, that leaving the 10-year spending, proposed 10-year spending inside of the plan creates, will create unrealistic and, and quite, quite candidly unfair expectations for people who, who reside on brick streets. They, they will not hear, they will not hear the conversation and, and everything that we've had here. They will look at the plan. They will see the 10-year plan embedded in there and, and they will, as I think most of us probably would if we, if we didn't have, you know, access to this level of conversation that we're having here. They're going to say that this is going forward. And, and so, um, you know, back to, back to Jamie's point, this has to be part of a, and Diana's as well, this has to be, it has to be part of a larger conversation, uh, as, as far as our, our budget priorities. Therefore, I am, I am not comfortable with leaving, leaving it in there. I mean, we could simply delete section 11.2 from the plan, leave everything else intact. But, and, and we can put the spending plan in a parking lot. We can, we can set it aside as part of our, our, our budget, our larger budget conversation. I'm just concerned about, again, leaving it in the plan. It suggests that, that the dollars are going to be there and, and, and we're simply a long way from that, you know.
It's a fair point. If I could put the suggestion, the staff suggestion forward, you can pass this with changing 11.2 instead of years to say phases. And, and I, and I've heard a couple of different people say that. That way, there's no, um, you know, misconception about the fact that this is year one, year two, your guaranteed spending. If you change it to phases, then you're dealing with it when the opportunity and the funding level arises, but it still allows for prioritization. Cause I still will go back to from a staff perspective, we'd like the policy and the perspective of the, of the prioritization matters to us. So we can also though, deal with residents. Well, yes, you may not be in year three, but you're in phase three and we haven't even gotten to phase one. So there's no expectation as far as kind of people understand where they're at.
But, but, but to that point, Jim, that, to me, that suggests a lack of clarity for people looking at that because they look at that and then they go, well, what's phase one? Right? It's, it's, there's no meaningful, it's not time boxed in, 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 in regards to when can we expect to see, see something going forward? I, I mean, to me, the principle here is, is that, and, and we talked about this at the committee, the whole meeting is that, that brick streets need to be factored in to all of the other infrastructure, along with all of the other infrastructure needs. And, and, and some of them are massive, um, as part of our budget prioritization and our, and the development of, of, of the next fiscal year budget. That's my concern with leaving the spending plan in, in, within the plan.
Okay. Actually, at this point, we are so far over budget in terms of time. Can I have a motion to, to give us an extra 10 minutes, at least to wrap up this part of the discussion?
Make that motion.
Uh, move by Alderman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, uh, Black. If everyone will just quickly vote on that procedural motion because we are way beyond what we had budgeted. Nine to zero, there are no names to announce. Madam Clerk, if you will start the clock over for another 10 minutes, uh, and we will, we'll go from there. Um, let's see. Alderman Lowamboy and Black.
I think he was first.
You were Black? Oh, oh, actually that's right. I called on you when you had me go to Alderman Sage. Black and Lowamboy.
Yep. Um, thank you. And thank you, Jim and Amelia for, for your work on this. And I feel like we've talked about this on a couple of different occasions. Um, and at the risk of getting a Jim through an email tomorrow, um, you know, which is probably inevitable, um, you know, I would say that, you know, I, I, I think about my time on council and, and I, I really do genuinely believe we are one community. And I, I think in the experience that I've had over 15 years ago, 20, 20 years ago, 15 years ago, the attitude of the city was to invest in, in neighborhoods and subdivisions that were on the outskirts of our community. Right or wrong, that was the case. And in my time here, I have voted on several agreements and one in which I did not vote for, where we've had to pay out large sums of money, millions of dollars as part of agreements that we made a long time ago. And we all sat around here saying, how did we get to this point? And, and it's not a ward issue, Ward 7 or historic core versus the east side, west side, north side. It's an issue of people who believe that they have been left behind and the policies of the city are not focused on them. And what, what I'm hearing here is a conversation about priorities and I'm with you on that one. I read in our comprehensive plan, we want to have focused infill development. The value of brick streets in, as described in the plan in our many conversations before, is measurable, defined, and we can actually see the results of our, our investments. It's very hard for me as an alderman to go back to a resident who says, I live on a brick street and it looks like trash. I moved here. I mean, you put the, the cheapest material you could here as quickly as possible because you wanted to have a quick fix, or worse, you talk about some of the gravel areas. Why? Meanwhile, we are looking to make turn lanes larger to accommodate little bits of traffic here and there, um, so people are mildly less, mildly less inconvenienced. We talk about sewer oversizing projects for residents that have not even moved here, for homes that have not even been built, and, and that's just part of what we do. Um, and as I've sat up here, we've talked about these things and we've talked about priorities. Where are we putting our dollars? I'm looking at, at a couple of those projects. If we don't do those, that funds a phase one, year one, and without having to move, uh, any kind of our bu, budget around. One of the reasons that I want to pass this tonight as presented is because when we have our budget conversation in a few months, when we actually see the full scope of everything, when we see how it fits in with our street resurfacing plans, with our capital improvement plans, and we're going to be short. There is no doubt about that. In each one of those areas, we are going to be short. We're going to have to make those tough calls. And I want to do it fully informed of the policies that we have passed because I think that the time has come for us to treat people fairly in our historic core, who have for decades now, really bankrolled a lot of sprawl that has negatively impacted their community. This isn't, again, I don't want to be framed up as Scott Black is saying, the east side is bad. Not at all. It's an issue of fairness. We talk about garbage fees and, and how it's consistent throughout our, our entire community. That's, I get it. But I hear feedback that says, it costs the city less money to get to my house in the core when it costs the city probably two, three times as much to get out to the far, far reaches of our, our community. Why don't they pay more for that service? We'd like to keep it fair and consistent. I get it. Costs us more money to pump out to our residents in, in, in the fringes of our community. That's right. Okay. I have no problem with that. But now is the time where we have to invest back in our historic core. The city made a choice. Elections have consequences. We are advocating for investing in, in a measurable way that's going to impact our city's investments. Our property owners are going to be able to get a increase in value. We can look at with pride at, at some of our historic areas. I was just in Charleston last weekend. They do a great job of historic preservation in a way that I don't think we would want to do here. But you see how people love those types of areas. Those are the photogenic spots of our community. Franklin Park is one of our biggest assets right there. Um, you know, we, I see yoga classes. I see our community picnic out there. These are things that bring people into our historic core, making it look nice. It's a solid investment for our future. And that way, people, when they're looking where they want to move in our community, they have options. They can live in, in, in the suburbs of, of the, the fringes of our community. They can live in our historic core and they can make an educated choice. They don't have to make that choice of, why does this street look like it's been patched up a hundred times? And what's the city going to do about it? As an alderman, I have to say, I don't know. With this, I can point to saying, we are being, making an aggressive policy. We have, we are looking here that it's methodical. This is how we go through. This is one of the best reports I've ever seen. And I prefer we call it an action plan, but that's my, my own opinion. Um, and if we make a decision come budget time that we have to shave some off for year one because we have to move it to some other need, I'm comfortable taking the heat for that because that accountability is back on me. But this sets a, a bar for me to go to that protects our historic core, improves the investments and drives our local economy and it fits within the comprehensive plan. So again, I appreciate all the work and I appreciate my colleagues' feedback and I look forward to voting yes on this.
Alderman Lowamboy.
Okay. Thank you, Jim. Thank you. You did a very nice job. And Scott, I'm going to call a spade a spade and say that you're anti-east side. I'm just kidding. You know you're not.
You're anti-smartphone.
No, I, I definitely appreciate your comments. And, and actually, as you were speaking, it, you know, it just kind of helped me reflect a little bit. Um, I, I think the plan is, um, it's, it's a good plan. You know, I, I like, you know, how, how it looks. Um, but my, um, and I should mention actually that, um, back in the early seventies, I lived on a brick street in Congo. So anytime I drive by a brick street, you know, I still have that. I, I remember that. You know, it's a very fond memory that I have. I mean, I think it was when I was about three or four years old. So I, I, I really like brick streets. Um, but at the same time, I, I do understand, um, a lot of the concerns that have been raised, um, about where we, we spend our money and where our priorities are. Um, you know, my, my, my concern i- is actually, uh, when it comes to the finances, you know, of, uh, of the plan. I, I'm worried that we might be setting, um, uh, an expectation, you know, that, you know, this is going to happen. I've seen it happen before, uh, with parks, uh, you know, when we have things in, in, in master plans. I've seen it happen before with, uh, the bicycle master plan as well. Um, and, and not to say that, I mean, I, you know, not to criticize those folks, but you know, when it did happen, you know, and they saw it in the plan, well, this is what we're going for. You know, you said it was in the plan. You said you're going to do it and therefore I expect you to do it. Um, and at this point, I, I do feel like the numbers, um, are, are, don't seem to be quite accurate. It seems like we're, we're pretty tentative with that. Uh, so my, my preference personally would be to, you know, we have Monroe, uh, street coming up, you know, in, uh, in 2018. So, uh, let's take a look at that, you know, let's work on it and then maybe we'll have a, a better sense of, you know, what things are going to look like for, um, other streets in the future. Um, I hope that, that makes sense. But I, I, I just feel like things are, uh, at this point, it's just like a shot in the air. And we're, we're not exactly a hundred percent sure how much things are going to cost. And plus the 10 years, to me, a 10-year plan seems to be kind of daunting. Those are my, the concerns that I have with this.
I would say that it's, it's not, uh, not a shot in the air. It is, it is actually based upon estimates from Springfield, Columbia, Missouri, and then also a preliminary engineering study from Hanson. Um, so we did try to, to give some numbers to it, the best estimates that we could, but we also want to be transparent. It's not exact. And so, um, we really do think, we still will stress, uh, we really feel strongly that, that we need some sort of philosophical, uh, decision by the council of policy. Then it's a matter of, you can make changes later on. We can tweak it. We can bring back, like we did with the bicycle master plan. We passed it. We found a new opportunity. We brought it back to our council. It was passed. We implemented it. Those are the way master plans are. They should never be one and done. They should be revisited and looked at. And I think we're trying to say that with this one. So we would still ask for that sort of direction.
Okay. Alderman Schmidt.
Um, and thank, I want to say thank you, Scott, for your eloquence about this. I certainly agree with us living with the sort of the sins of the past. Um, I am uncomfortable with, I would hate not to pass this plan. I would hate to pass a plan that has numbers embedded in it that I think at this moment are dishonest of us because we haven't had that bigger conversation. Um, for all I know, you know, we may decide to bond some money and this is, we'd like to put more in brick streets. I, I, it feels like trying to set the money into the plan, um, is, is a false signal at this moment in time. So I would much rather pass the plan without a 10-year spending plan. Um, go ahead. I'm very, very supportive of the Monroe Street, um, changes and, and fold this into our larger conversation about all of our other infrastructure needs and all of our other capital improvement plan needs. I, I don't, this feels like it's, um, being done in isolation of, of that bigger conversation which we absolutely have to have. So I'm, that's where I'm.
Is that a motion? Is it a motion to, to, to support it with the stripping out?
Yes, I guess I will make that motion.
I would like to speak. I've had my light on for a while.
Oh, oh, no, you, you can, you can speak. I was just, uh, it just, if we had a, so did you say that you had a motion to support the plan, but to remove anything that has to do with dollar amounts?
I guess I'll, I'll make that motion just to move us along. Yeah.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Painter and then Alderman Bray and then Burgess.
So thank you, and thank you all for your input and, uh, you know, being new now as, as an alderman and getting through this packet and this information. Um, I have a lot of questions about where we've been and where we're going. And so one question I have is, Jim, these, these expenses and the, the cost to do these, to get these materials and do these repairs, it's being driven by the fact that these streets are obsolete. Is that right? This technique and all these materials, it's not the way streets are done anymore.
They're not typically the way streets are done anymore, but what I would say is a lot of these streets have been patched over time and we'll see that in some of the next photos, in the next item. Um, they all have, a lot of them reached, like, you know, they're, the end of their useful life. Monroe is kind of, we've been debating, we debated whether you could patch it and make it kind of extend the life a little bit of it. We, we might still try that if we, depending on the funding levels where we're at. But, but from a standpoint of this, these streets, yeah, that's, that's lasted 90 years. Monroe has. It was built in the twenties and so it's, it's lasted 90 years.
Alderman Howman brought up a, an interesting point, um, in regards to, um, creative funding for these kinds of things. And you said that some of that was explored, oh gosh, what, nine, eight years ago, but not this time.
Mm-hmm. We had actually polled at this time. The data is still there. The data is still relevant. Um, there are many different types of funding sources, SSAs, there used to be some of those different types of districts in, in this, in this city, actually. That's a lot of the way that, uh, infrastructure districts are, some of the ways that, uh, it was paid for in the past historically. Um, what I would say with that though, is tying that to, to street resurfacing, I, I do want to say that, uh, from a staff perspective, it is really important that, that we've talked to you about the needs for street resurfacing and our funding level out there. I will, I, I wanted to bring these numbers. I presented these to you in the past, um, capital improvement plan as part of that. This is, shouldn't be new. Uh, we've done this in previous presentations, but on an annual basis, we're needing between eight and nine million dollars a year for our resurfacing. And what we have been, uh, my thanks to this council, there was a, you know, there was a large spending flux in 2014. But again, we've, we've been talking about and I appreciate some of that continued discussion about the infrastructure, the importance of our streets, but it's underfunded right now. So I really would caution, you know, the, you know, spending out of that and taking away funds from that. I realize that's hard because brick streets are a street. And so how do you separate those two? And so it is, that is tough, but I would just say for the remainder of the streets out there, they're at risk now. And we, we have been saying that for a while and I think that's important to note.
Thank you for that. Um, so from my perspective, I mean, there, there are some things that, that we could flesh out, uh, in regards to some funding options. There's some things about the priority, priorities as far as setting this up as a 10-year plan, as well as identifying streets in a particular order that may not be valid if we add in the pieces about where the money's coming from and who wants to, to buy in. If, if we do a public private partnership to pay for some of these streets, some of the streets that, that folks are on, they may not choose to participate. And so just from my perspective, it, it, while, while I find the plan very fascinating and I certainly love the historic flavor that the brick streets give, I'm not sure that at this juncture, that, that this is fully matured to the point that, that I could vote in favor. that this is fully matured to the point that I could vote in favor of it. And I'd like to be able to vote in favor of it. And at this juncture, I just believe it's a little premature because we don't know yet, as Jamie pointed out, Alderman Mathie, that we don't really know exactly what everything will look like come next year.
Alderman, Burgess, you had your light on, or?
Yeah, we're over time.
We are way over time again.
One super fast thing is, I will say that the brick street technology is not obsolete. It's actually being used all over Europe. Currently, they're putting a lot of streets back. So that's not a concern of mine. And if you flip that slide with your expected life cycle on there, it says, local streets have a life cycle of 27 years. Well, what would our funding model and that necessarily look like if our life expectancy was 90 years on all of our local streets? The whole conversation would look different. So just it's a perspective. We do have priority discussions, but if we change some of those ideas of how we look at things as a long-term perspective, it could be drastically different scenario we're talking about right now.
Right. At this point, we will vote on the motion that is presented. No, it is, the funding was removed, the specific funding levels.
Right. I'm suggesting that we approve the brick master plan minus the 10-year spending plan with an expectation that we will provide some kind of funding for brick streets that comes out of our...
It's part of our general prioritization.
Can I ask a question and clarification?
Sure.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to ask. So this motion would just remove 11.2, everything else would remain? Is that correct?
[inaudible]
11.2 is the 10-year spending plan.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the memo, so...
Right.
Yeah.
So Jim, is 11.2 the only thing that references spending?
There are various other pieces of the document that reference back to that in summary aspects. We could take that council direction, absolutely, and remove any reference. Or we could just add something that the, you know, we'll deal with it from a staff perspective. That's fine. But be very clear, council action approved this without that. And so we can make those changes.
The intention is, at least my intention about this, is to make sure that we are talking about brick streets as part of our infrastructure funding. And not to just say we have a nice plan and we'll set it off on the shelf. So however, what that means in terms of stripping the specific 10-year spending plan out of the budget...
I think we can do that. I don't see an issue with that. The one issue, I will say that I just need to be very transparent about is, I still think it's very important for that maintenance contract. Without it, that's 100,000, that's a different piece.
And we could very easily...
That's not street by street. That is just more of an annual maintenance contract so we can, we can deal with the gravel patches we have. We can look at future utility cuts.
But that's the next, that's the next item, right?
No, that actually isn't. The next item is Monroe's.
That would be something that we could discuss for the FY '19 budget.
Okay.
So we would talk about that, but I want to just say that publicly now. We would look to do that.
Okay. If we can, go ahead and then vote.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I know we've been way over time here. I know that you mentioned there's a lot of references in here, and even just scrolling through the plan itself, there's a number of points at which we talk about cost. And even just removing 11.2...
That's why we'll say it's not just 11.2.
I would, I don't know what that does to what the rest of the plan would entail. I mean, it just words on a page, and I don't want to have a plan to sit on a shelf. Let me see what...
Well, I think it's more than a plan that sits on a shelf. I think it's a policy without specific dollars. But it says that when we make our decisions for, as Alderman Sage has said, when we are looking at the priorities of all of our expenditures and all our capital plans, brick streets is at the table. And it may be that, I think, as you put it, you're willing to take the heat for saying, no, well, we're not going to be able to meet the 100% of that. We're going to take some of that out. Or we're going to prioritize, we've got to put money into sewers, we've got to put money into regular street resurfacing, we've got to put money into a lot of stuff. But that, this would be at the table, as I see it. Is it conceptual 500 foot?
So I hear it, and I understand the motion. I'm going to be voting no on it because I like to put my money where my mouth is. And I think that we need to have that piece in there, and maybe it's phases or stages or whatever you want to call it. I think that takes out kind of the core of what we're up to. Because I imagine there's a final published version of this would just be this plan without 11.2 in there, which kind of takes out the meat of the sandwich, in my opinion. Maybe? I mean, I guess we're doing this in the process.
Okay, all right. Yeah, we're in the process, we're way out of order because we're actually just debating it as some people have already voted. And we have an attorney who's laughing.
Mayor, could you just summarize one more time?
If I can, I can summarize, looking with the maker of the motion, who can smack me if I'm incorrect, this is a motion which says, we have a brick streets plan. We are committing to that conceptually at 500 feet. That's going to be at the table when we consider all of the issues that we have to consider when we put together this budget, when we put together the next budget, when we put together the budget after that. Just that it is a priority. These are the goals ideally that we would achieve. Is that...
Yes, you're doing well. No smacking.
No smacking yet.
Mayor, could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
If possible, why don't we, as a staff, make the tweaks to it? Let's make the adjustments to the plan. There's nothing that says you have to pass this tonight. While, as a staff, I hesitate in the past when we haven't passed something in one night. It doesn't happen sometimes for a long time. I will, I am thankful, our city manager, Steve Rasmussen, will ensure that we get this done. I know he will, he will drive this process forward to make sure it happens. But what I really want to, I would suggest maybe you, we make the changes, bring it back to the council again for some action. Because I'm concerned, as we look at, as I was talking with Mr. Hill, that we're going to miss some things.
Okay. Well, we have, the maker of the motion does not want to withdraw her motion.
Okay.
And get her done.
Good. I appreciate that.
And to get her done. But if it doesn't pass, then we can figure out what 2.0 is.
I'll be quiet.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, Mayor. We're also voting on the 127...
No, that's the next item.
No, 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 no.
Next item.
I thought you said it was embedded in this. I've been here five hours. I apologize.
No, no, no. There's no money committed.
Yeah.
No money committed.
So an I vote is in favor of Karen's motion.
Okay.
I just want to make sure I understand what I'm voting for. The motion, the practical impact of the motion is to remove Section 11.2, nothing else. Is that correct?
There may be some...
No, no, no. Karen just nodded. She made the motion.
And any reference to... Yes, I don't, I don't know. I feel like I'm now being trapped in words where I have not read every single...
I'm not trying to trick anything. Because...
There may be other funding implications that I think should be part of our budget priority conversation, which we have yet to have.
I hear that clearly as staff.
But even if those are recommendations embedded in here or references to potential costs, we're not committing to anything if we pass this plan tonight, even with 11.2, but certainly not without it.
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand what we're voting on.
Okay. I always appreciate our attorneys on the board, right? Here's what I thought Karen said, was that references 11.2, that's why I asked for clarification, to say, are there references elsewhere in the plan that either call out specific spending or reference 11.2? I'm saying those need to be removed. And that's what I thought Karen said. That's why Amelia jumped on that, because she was seeing if it was locked down to just 11.2. And what I'm saying is that it doesn't seem to me to give us much credibility if we remove 11.2 and leave references elsewhere in the document to 11.2. That just doesn't seem reasonable. So...
Can I comment on that?
Yeah, yeah.
My concern, I'll be very explicit about my concern, is when you say that we should remove any references to spending or estimates, that potentially impacts a large portion of this plan that's informational about, you know, our best estimates of costs. I don't see a need to remove those based on what Karen said. Is that incorrect?
No. Estimates, no. There's a whole section on it.
Right, right. So that's why I wanted to clarify, it's 11.2.
11.2 is spending.
Correct. Yes. And any references to 11.2 now, if this passes, would go nowhere, right? Because 11.2 no longer exists.
So it just makes sense to clean up the document in my opinion.
Okay.
Okay. I think that's, is there a question on the motion that's made?
Again, I'm just unclear how you can vote on a document that isn't marked fully, that I'm not sure that it has your full philosophy in it. It certainly does, and 10.5 set out the particulars of whichever properties are identified. And if you have an overall brick philosophy, how does it incorporate that? I'm just unclear how you go forward and vote with these, you know, not creative.
If I'm understanding it correctly...
And so my legal heart feels not, you know, to say that I don't think it's a good idea to vote on a document that you don't know what it's going to look like, what you don't know what you're passing yet.
If, as we understand, 11.2...
I'll stop there.
Okay. If, as I understand, and then I will, because we're still clarifying as we are voting, that if we removed 11.2, it is just expenditures, not necessarily estimates. And I believe that's the way Alderman Sage put it. He's okay, and I think we're, some are okay with estimates.
Wrap it up.
Wrap it up. You're right. I'm trying to do that, but between, not stepping on people's toes. So, okay, at this point, I'm sorry.
I just want to respond to Kim to say that I think passing this is our commitment to taking care of our brick streets. What's missing from that is exactly how much money can we afford to spend on it in FY '19, FY '20? And every year, that might change. I would hope that the spending would be larger than smaller. But I don't think, as I said before, I think it's dishonest of us to say, okay, we've got a plan here for $850,000, and we don't even know how big the puddle of water is that we have to spend on everything. That has to be part of another conversation for me.
Okay. Okay, if everyone will, almost everyone has voted. We have one more vote. Snot. Okay, the motion carries, because you winked at me. Six to three, and it passes. Would you announce the names, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Black, Alderman Howman, and Alderman Bray.
Commentez donc, snot en français? Joli? No! I know, in a French, it's not joli.
Well, that was fun. I'm going to go ahead and jump into the next item. This is great. The next, next item, 8E. This ties in. Since the last discussion was entertaining, this should be another interesting discussion.
Okay. But we are going to, this one's going to be much tighter with respect to the time limits, given that we have spent a lot of time on brick streets. But a productive conversation.
As part of the Monroe Street brick discussion, this is the first phase, year the highest priority brick street out of the recently passed and approved brick street master plan. So the, our water director, Bob Yale, is here in the front because this also has water infrastructure impacts. And so if there's any questions, he'll be available for those as well. From this standpoint, what we're talking about is, again, the highest priority brick street out of the master plan is Monroe Street from Robinson to Clinton. Again, whenever we look at this, we look at pictures. This is what we've been talking about. A lot of these, a lot of these different concrete patches, those white clear areas, it's hard to see, but those are concrete patches from utility digs over the years. And that's what a lot of times happens with brick streets. And that's why we really want to make sure there's ways to deal with those utility cuts to preserve them, to make sure they're repaired appropriately. So again, when we look at those photos, here is an area that we really want to highlight on Monroe, up at the intersection at Clintonson. You'll see there's a lot of rutting that happens. And that's one of the issues long-term with brick streets. We're trying to accommodate in the design. Anytime you'll drive a brick street, that's why on Elm or Chestnut, there were some changes that went to concrete because those brick streets, any of the trucks, as they would come up to the intersection, the force from those trucks breaks up underneath the base. And so that's what causes this failure and this rutting. And so we have to be able to deal with that long-term. So the estimated cost, and this is from some preliminary work this done by Hanson, is $836,000. Let's break that down, though. And this is, this deals in addition with sidewalks, some of the, also the different pavements that go into the driveway approaches for houses. It also deals with that. So the $127,000 that you're referencing before Alderman Sage, is for this item dealing with both the design and construction engineering associated with this section of Monroe. And so then we move on to the water. Whenever the water department looked at this section, while they wouldn't have improved the water main next year, you know, that's not something that was high on their priority list. Unfortunately, though, if you're going to do a brick street, that's the time to do any improvement underneath of there. It's going to, if it's going to last 100-plus years, you've got to make sure what's underneath gets fixed. Otherwise, you're right back to all the patchwork. So Mr. Yale appropriately said, well, I need to move this if the council approves it as part of the same action item. So, but I want to make sure to separate the two. You can't, you know, tie that together and say that total cost, it was another piece of infrastructure. And so again, if we break down the design services as part of what we're talking about, it's $127,000 plus the 52 for the water main, design and construction engineering. So all of that does bring this block of Monroe to over $1 million, but you have to take into account, that's that block-to-block mentality that we've been discussing. What we're looking for tonight is just some direction from the council on the design and construction engineering services from Hanson. And so tonight, all we're asking for in this item is for you to consider this initial phase for us, for the design and construction.
And that is you're asking us for the $179,000, and $179,024.
If that were approved, then the design would begin, and then the, what would happen is, as part of the budget process, then the council would consider the remainder of Monroe to be budgeted in the next year. And that's what we discussed that last in their 8D. And so if you approve the designs tonight, we would go ahead, move forward, and look to get the plans completed, see if it's in the budget, bid the project, and then have some better cost dollars. Approving this tonight, these consulting services, does not commit the council to approving the construction budget. I think that's important to note. So that doesn't say, by approving this, if you did that, we have to move forward to the construction. It just takes that first step to get the work designed. So at that point, would take any questions that you have.
Alderman Burgess.
I think Matthew was first. Go ahead.
So the one thing you didn't say was sewers. So we've already cameraed these sewers. We know that they're, I'm just, you're talking about everything else, but that's another thing we're digging up streets for, so.
Lining. So that's what we would have to be looking at. But that would be, that would not be something we'd have to tear up the street for. So that's why we feel comfortable with where we're at. But good question.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Burgess.
That's a very big number. Ultimately, it's a very big number. And I think, you know, we can't get to the final cost until we do some engineering studies because we just don't have enough information. So I think that's helpful to keep in mind. But equally important, I think, is the life cycle cost. So we've touched on a lot tonight, how these streets have a longer life cycle by far compared to asphalt. And when you do the life cycle analysis, and I did this, and I had someone check my math, actually had two people check my math to make sure I got it right. And when you do the life cycle analysis on this portion of Monroe, looking at your estimates from last year for asphalt resurfacing, and putting it out over 100 years, and I only use 3% interest, I know you've, in the past, have said 6% is closer to what asphalt's increasing by, but I was conservative. Over that time period, the number's 1.27. So in terms of life cycle cost, it's very, it shows a very different picture in terms of what these costs are and how there is equity. And I get it, when you're doing a life cycle cost, there's a huge margin of error. So I wouldn't...
You're saying 1.2 million for asphalt?
Yes. So I wouldn't necessarily take that as gospel. But again, I did have someone check my math based on a 3% increase. And we use a 20-year interval instead of a 30-year interval because I think 20 years. But, you know, I mean, certainly, that's a number that perhaps in the future, staff should double-check and look at itself. So we are comparing apples to apples. Because if all we did was compare the million-dollar cost to the cost for resurfacing for the next, you know, 15 to 30 years, this doesn't look like a rational decision. But when you take it out over that time period, it is a more rational decision, especially when you bring into consideration the other aspects to this, which is that, number one, if we don't do this, it's gone. There is no, there is no plan. There is no preservation. But hopefully, you know, if council decides to move forward, getting more information, we can begin to introduce some of that conversation about what does the long-term implications look like for these streets, and is there a cost parity? Or, you know, if there is a differential, what is it, and which direction does it go in?
Alderman Howman.
Thanks. If we do the design work without a sense that we're going to continue with that, it seems, to me, it seems inappropriate. That's the comment. And then I have another, but I do have a question, too. And that is, if the... that is, um, if the streets last, if, if a brick street lasts up to ninety, to ninety to a hundred years, how long is this, how long does the water main last?
Uh, it's, right now, about a hundred and ten years old under the street right now.
Yeah, I, well, I know that, I, but what's the typical life expectancy of a, of a water main?
Just to standardize, fifty years.
Okay, so at some point, we're going to be looking at potentially having to tear up the, the brick street to redo the water main and halfway through its life expectancy.
There is that potential, yes.
Didn't you say you can line it without tearing it up?
That was sewers. For a sewer.
Lining water main is more of a, a newer technology.
Okay, okay.
Not mainstream, but it is coming to age. Maybe in fifty years. Maybe in fifty.
Right, right.[1107.44][1107.44](laughing).
Another piece of information to add, that just using our own data in this community, uh, on city streets, this is pavement condition over time. Uh, right now, the council for local streets has a, a rating that we don't want to get lower than three. And so our data shows that our streets reach that in twenty-two to twenty-seven years, and so the, from that standpoint. Um, and then the, the estimate from twenty sixteen, when the residents did want to have this resurfaced, the resurfacing costs were about forty-four thousand dollars to resurface that block. So the additional data, um, as part of this, just, uh, so that you have that as well.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. Alderwoman Bray.
So, to understand that we could resurface the street for forty-four thousand dollars, but this will be over a million dollars to do this street.
Correct, the facet of the forty-four thousand doesn't include, to, to be fair and equitable, it doesn't deal with the sidewalks. The other one did deal with completely with the sidewalks, and the other one dealt with the driveway aprons as well. And so normally, we don't touch driveway aprons. And so as part of that over, when you do a complete overhaul of the street, uh, like we did on Linden, for example, sometimes you have to adjust and deal with driveway aprons, that's fairly standard. Um, but resurfacing, you don't typically.
I'm just struggling with how, this, this is the city's bill. I'm just having a real hard time with that. Um, and the, the reason being that when these streets were put in, they were the common construction, and today, they're no longer the common construction, and so you're paying permeable prices to try to figure it all out. And it seems to me surely there's some other solution that is somehow more, more, uh, cost-effective and still gives residents the streets that everyone else has, it gives them an opportunity to have functioning streets, but I just don't see this as something that the city owes, um, in toto, has been, has been proposed, and I'll be voting against it. Thank you.
Aldo, Alderman Black.
Thank you. Uh, thank you again. Um, to me, this is why voting, having the spending piece in the plan is important, uh, and why I voted against it, because here we are talking about where it lines up in, in, in our phases, and this is all part and parcel, as we talked about earlier. Uh, yeah, we don't know what the ultimate outcome might be, we have to do some of this design work. Um, I think this is a, a priority for a, a key area, that's going to be a, a signature for the neighborhood. Um, yes, it's a little expensive, yes, we can do it on, on, uh, on the cheap, but I'm, that's not, that's not the approach I want to take in, in this case. I think this is an example of us trying to protect our historic neighborhoods, invest in them appropriately. Maybe it costs a little bit more, and, and it's hard to say forty-four large, plus then whatever the other costs that you talked about are, I mean, that's, that's, we're going to, that's what's going to get put in the media. But ultimately, what I'm looking at is, is an investment in a key area that is going to return dividends to the property owners, it's going to have that return on investment that we're looking for, and I'm excited to support it.
But also, a million includes sewers.
This includes the water main work.
Water main, I'm sorry.
Yes. This does include the water main design and construction inspection.
And roughly, how many, how many thousand was that, again?
I'm sorry, what's that?
How many thou, hundred thousand was that?
Uh, for the water main, it's estimated will-
It's right there.
To two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
Two thirty, okay, okay. So, so it's really not forty-four thousand versus a million, there, there are another quarter of a million for that, there's another-
Let me back up. Let me back up here, too, because, again, that's really more of that forty-four thousand, the construction costs of the seven hundred thousand, and that seven hundred thousand also includes sidewalk work and some driveway apron, so it, to, to be fair, I don't want this, that, those numbers seem very inequitable, but I want to make sure you have the full picture, too.
Okay. All right. Alderwoman Burgess, and then we'll vote.
Um, yeah, I'm going to make a motion.
Please, go ahead.
So we can do the voting. Um, I move that we approve the item eight E as presented, A and, so it would be A and B? No, wait, hang on.
Yeah.
A and B, so eight E, A and B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Black. Okay, uh, let's go ahead and vote. Six to three, there are three nays pronounced, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Sage, Alderman Harmon, and Alderman Bray.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for do, for all the work you put through, through this. And at this point, city manager's discussion. Uh, interim city manager, Steve Rasmussen.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and, uh, to make sure that we get through this quickly, I will be brief, but I did want to make one note, and that is that, uh, the signage committee has been working for the last two months, and they would like to bring the new signage designs, uh, forward to the city council, uh, at the, a work session at the next day of the city council meeting, which would be the eleventh. Uh, that, that, I'm not going to present that, could you please turn that off?[1421.12][1421.12](laughing). Nice try, though.[1423.75][1423.75](laughing).
Oh. This looks like, this looks like-
All right, as long as you've got it there, leave, leave it there, and I'll do both. Thanks.[1434.33][1434.33](laughing). In the interest of time, I was going to delete this, but what happens is, on the wayfinding committee, the committee's been working on that for the last two months, and we've got a lot of public input, you've seen the signs in various locations, we sent to the city council a, uh, sample of each one of the things that the public has voted on it, and they have, uh, signage committee now has a selected design. They'd like to bring it back to you on the eleventh, and inviting our, uh, wayfinding architects to come from Pittsburgh on the eleventh to present that to you, but not to vote on. Uh, that will give another week for everybody to talk about that, and then bring it back for the vote on the eighteenth. That's what they would like to do, and I wanted to give you that as a preview, if that would seem like it'd work okay with you, and I'd be happy to take comments, uh, now or later on that. And then, we're interested in doing that, so that once you get a vote on it, then we can send that out, so that we can begin to get the design specifications, so we can actually, uh, commit, uh, for the expenditure of the funds in this year's budget. So we, I hope everybody's had a chance to look at those, to see what the public has voted on, and we wanted to bring it back to a work session on the eleventh. And then, since we've already put that up, uh, what's happened is, uh, the council and members of the public have asked before, what are the downtown events that are coming about? The newspaper usually presents them after they've happened, and people say, gee, I wish I would have known about that, I would have liked to have gone. So what I've done is I've asked our now downtown development division to give us the downtown events that are happening during the month of December, and there are other events that are done by private entities, but these are the ones that are being done at the Museum of History, uh, Grosinger Motors Arena, or the BCPA, and that way, people have an opportunity to look at it. And what I'll do is I'll include a paper copy of that in the future, uh, with the city manager's report, so you'll have something to look at, to see what you might want to do in the coming weeks.
I like the title, December Fun Downtown. So, I look forward to January Fun Downtown. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Uh, actually, I, the only thing that I have, I, I would like to, uh, thank Alderwoman Howman for, uh, going to the National League of Cities and representing us. Uh, I do, as a result of that, I do want to issue a, a friendly competition for next year with our town of Normal.